Hi, uh, calls as any order. And I'm sorry to order to Dr. Simmons for our financial.
Yeah, financial planning session, budget workshop, whatever you like to call it. We can call it. So tonight we'll look at several different things. Make sure you guys are jumping in for the questions, Mr. Hobson. Anytime you want to have a question, please make sure you ask it. Um, we've got lots of things we're going to go over. Just kind of a really generic overall budget plan. Talk about the CTE grant, bus plan, HVAC, staffing, revenue expenditures. And then we'll probably spend quite a bit of time on future projections and plan. I've got a new tool that I've using, using called a cash flow analysis that does a really nice job with revenues, expenditures, and you can plug in all your numbers and it tells you where you're going. Um, so I think I finally found something that's going to show some good actual numbers for our district and, and help me and hopefully help me communicate that to you kind of where we're headed as far as a roadmap. So budget plan, uncertain economy. Um, I know I'm beating a dead horse with this a little bit, but um, you know, the Missouri legislature is kind of all over the place depending on what day. And there's about a week, maybe two weeks left in the, in the legislative session and then we'll actually know what we're going to get as far as funding. The Senate passed a good appropriations amount for us that we really like, but the governor could still take a pin to that and cut where he wants to cut. So we're waiting to kind of see where all of that ends up. Staffing cuts are a big part of what we're going to talk about tonight and um, all of those staff reductions that have happened this spring, what that means to our, our budget book when we look ahead. Conservative spending, you know, and I'll say this for, for Megan and I went over, Roger came in this morning and we went over kind of a short version of this. I know he's not here for this session, but we talked about it a little bit. Twenty percent is our goal for our unrestricted fund balance. That's a number we look at a lot. That's the savings account for the school and we don't want to dip in. We don't want to go below 20 if we don't have to. This year we were, or last year FY '24, we were at 19%. That's with the HVAC loan. Yes?
Remember that was reduced to 17?
It, no, the final ASBR number though was, was 19%.
Okay, I thought on the, on the.
So the first report we had was lower, but then it jumped back up to 19. And that's the official number that the auditor.
We talked about that in your office.
Right, but that's with, that's with the HVAC.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, now if, if we would have, if we would have paid off the loan, which I think that's what you're talking about, right?
No.
No?
I was referring to the, to what was in the budget.
Are you referring to the audit?
Yeah, to the audit, yeah.
Yes.
When it was revised, it was revised to 19.
The next meeting.
Okay.
It was revised.
19.
Yeah, so that's the actual number that's in. Now that's again with the HVAC payment plan that we went with. If we had decided to pay off the entire HVAC, obviously that would have been a lot lower than that.
13.
Yes. ASBR, is that, is that the one that's on the, you know, what's on the DSC website?
It's on the DSC website, yes.
Now, we have, we actually have that, or do we have that data already for this year?
We do not.
We don't have that yet.
No, we won't have that till, till June 30th, when the fiscal year ends. And we'll have a good idea before that. So at the July meeting, I should be able to, like tonight I can give you a pretty good idea of where we're at, but it won't be official until the end of the fiscal year. So again, kind of after another slide decline, like, and I'll show you where I'm getting this number in a little bit, but 17% is what I'm looking at for FY '25. So when the auditor comes back again next November, whenever he shows up, we're probably looking at a 17% unrestricted fund balance. But remember that's before we've done any kind of, of staff reduction or, or work really on the budget. So we'll be back above 20% in FY '26 and again, I'll show you all of this in a minute.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're good.
You said that the, the future projection for FY '25 would be 17, but that, that number is prior to the staff reductions.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I mean, it would be.
So 17% is where we were without, with just keeping on our course that we've been on for the last several years. No staff reductions, everything's as it was. And I'll show you visually where that was headed here in a minute. And it's a, it's a, it's a pride picture.
I'm sorry, I thought you said that.
No, you're good.
I just wanted to make sure I heard you.
Um, and we'll talk about this again later too, but um, I think the actual number came to like six four, some six, or 640,000 when you factor in um, benefits and insurance and everything else. And I went lower on that just to be conservative with it. So we're not getting ahead of ourselves. Again, I'll show and tell in coming slides kind of what that looks like in a visual representation. So following represents a roadmap for FY '26 and beyond. FY '25 ends in June, so there's not much we can do about FY '25. So we're really focused on what are, what do we have ahead in FY '26.
Yeah, but you started, you started conservative spending at the beginning of FY '25.
Correct.
Or '25, so that's why you're seeing the.
And that's why this number will be 17 and not like 14 or 13.
Right.
Right. So shifting gears for a couple of different things, just some big rocks in the budget. The CTE grant that we've gotten from Desi and Josh and Mr. Knapp are going to be here later tonight to talk more about this, so I won't steal their thunder. This has been enormously beneficial. This has basically allowed us to avoid a lot of capital projects in FY '25. It's helped us kind of tread water for this year.
On our deal, we got $22,000 difference.
Yeah, sorry, yours is not updated. It is, it is now in the drive, but that was a week ago and then some more bills came in. So this is the, this is the current number of what we have left.
We have that?
We have this slideshow, yes.
Where's it at?
Under the, the first thing.
Yeah, it's a whole.
We've got the slideshow.
Financial planning?
It's on Coach Colly's.
It's a slideshow or something.
On the Colly iPad.
I was looking for that earlier and I couldn't find it.
Okay. So yeah, this is the, this is the current number of what we have left. We have to spend that off by June 30th. So that's right where we want to be. Those guys have done a really good job of spending money, but doing it in a way that makes a lot of sense. Um, and again, they're going to show you a lot of what they've been doing and um, I don't, I see, gosh, it's been a long time since you guys have been over there really and it's, uh, the stuff that we've done over there is amazing.
FFA something.
We met over there.
It was in the fall, wasn't it?
Yeah.
No, spring?
No, it was, it was this winter.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Late or early spring.
Month or two.
Yeah.
So we'll see that later, but that's right where we want to be. We want to spend every penny of that because that's free money that has to be spent. Yeah, that's right. That's right. Any thought, questions, like I said, more detail coming on the regular session for that. Okay, bus plan. This is something Tommy and Logan and I sat down. You know, we had a bus plan. Mr. Hall had a bus plan a long time ago. We've gotten off of that before I got here and we just really needed to scrap it and just kind of start from scratch with where we are and where we want to be. So this, I mean, it tracks back all the way to 13, 14 and you can kind of see our bus purchases. Um, I put some comments over there if there needed to be specifics and then an estimated cost moving forward. So we did buy one bus in FY '25. For FY '26, we are not going to purchase a bus. We are going to purchase one suburban to head to the fleet. Um, that's where our transportation guys felt like the need was greatest right now was we are putting so many miles on our Suburbans, special education transports, just running those things into the ground. So um, the, the biggest need was a suburban, so we'll do that in FY '26. That'll also kind of help the overall budget just for a year to kind of, until we get into more of a plan.
Is that replacing one or adding one to the fleet?
That's adding one to the fleet and then one will be taken out of commission.
So it'll be basically replacing.
Yes, yeah. Um, and then starting in '26, '27, we're going to try to get back into the habit of adding two per year. That's where Tommy feels comfortable and where we want to be as a fleet to continue that. We have one of the best transportation departments around. And I trust Tommy and Logan and they feel comfortable with two. Now, we have some trip buses coming up at some point. Trip buses are a little more expensive. They've got the undercarriage, storage, um, air condition, a little more pricey. So you'll see the price those two years, we're going to split it. We'll do one route bus and one trip bus. So we're not doing two trip buses in one year. And those are estimated prices, like Tommy sent me a quote a couple of weeks ago when all the tariff things came out and um, Bluebirds already said, oh, we've got to go up because the tariffs are coming. So even though they weren't even here yet, they've already jacked the, the prices up. So that's an estimate, obviously that could go up. But when we get to the cash flow analysis, I've already put all of these numbers in so you can see how the, how that will impact the budget in coming years. And there'll be no surprises now when it comes to time for purchase, the bus purchases, you'll see that that's part of the plan. Any questions on buses before I get to the next slide? Uh, this is just a reminder kind of where we're at on our debt service schedule. We only have one debt as a district and that is for the middle school HVAC. Um, right now we are, we just paid the 415, 25 payment. So we are dropped down to 1.395 million left on that loan. And again, just to kind of catch Megan up a little bit, um, this loan, while it's in the bank is getting 4%. And the money that we have on, in the bank is getting a 4% interest while it's in the bank. So it makes much more sense for us to keep payments instead of just paying it all off in one lump sum. So that we can, so we can draw the interest off of the, the bulk money that's sitting in the bank.
The interest rate on the loan is?
4.04. Oh, on the loan, I'm sorry.
2.5.
Yeah.
Two, yeah.
Yes, 2.5.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So you're making.
So we're making money.
Making a little.
Exactly.
Which will be less and less as it.
As it dwindles down.
But also you'll pay less interest too.
Yeah.
The principal would be getting knocked.
It has, it started out roughly around a teacher's salary worth of.
It was like money a thousand a year. Yeah, yeah.
Which will continue to get less.
Right, but right now it's beneficial for us to continue. But anytime we wanted, the board decides, hey, we just want to pay this off and be done with it, we can, we can look into it in that.
But that would lower unrestricted.
It would, I mean, it would lower the unrestricted fund balance. But as if, you know, in four or five years, if we get to the place where we've got a 30% unrestricted fund balance and we say, hey, let's go ahead and pay that thing off and then we could do that.
Right, and it's going to be much smaller at that point.
Sure, yeah, much more easy. Easier bite to handle. Um, this is just the teacher salary schedule. We're going to go through this a little bit in a regular session too, but I just kind of want to hit it in both sessions. There is no change to the schedule from the current. This is the current schedule and I'm going to recommend that we do not change that for next year. No increase to the base for certified or non-certified employees. I think I've got.
What does the MAA, MAA 16, is that how many years?
Sure, so masters, masters plus eight college hours or 16 college hours. Yeah. So a couple of points on this, no change in the base salary. I will recommend tonight that we increase the board paid insurance cap to offset rise in premiums. Employees will not see a rise in their monthly expenses, expenses depending on the plan. Obviously if they choose a, a higher level plan, they may have to, to pay more. Allow movement in both certified and non-certified salary schedule. So years of experience, additional degrees. The other option is to freeze the salary schedule, um, which that was really popular, not really popular, it was very unpopular about, I don't know, 10 or 15 years ago when the state was going through some, some pretty big budget um, issues. I know some neighboring schools that, that froze the schedule. The problem with that is when you go to unfreeze the schedule, you've had a teacher that's moved all kinds of levels over and you've got to pay them. They all go up dramatically. So we want to avoid that if possible. So we're still going to allow movement and that'll work for classified as well. Like, you know, if our bus drivers, if they, they'll get another year of service and get to bump up on the schedule as well.
Question.
Yeah.
We added, did we add one or two steps?
Two.
We've added two.
Okay, what years were they, they're not, because they don't show on there, right? Aren't they like year 23 and 27 or?
Was it 19, 21?
19 and 21, yeah. Well, it's not show.
It was for masters, teachers, I'm pretty sure.
That's right, yeah. So at 19, they bump up on the masters and then 20 and 21. Yeah, so there's, it's, we waited, yeah, you have to have your masters to get that.
To get the super.
It is, yeah, I needed that line. Um, and then one more note on the salary and benefits side of things. FY '27, so this time next year, when I'm recommending a salary schedule, it may look very, very different because my homework and my goal is to come up with a new salary schedule and that is a scary proposition. But um, everything I'm hearing from Desi is urging superintendents to try to find um, a new salary schedule that will get your base to 40,000 so you're not relying on the state for that baseline salary grant. Because at some point that will go away and we'll still be stuck with the 40,000 base. So if we can get to it locally, we're not relying on the state for that money anymore and we can go ahead and budget knowing that there it is, that's taken care of. But that gets really tricky because we've got a big salary schedule that takes care of people way out here and way down here. So if you increase the base to 40,000, that flows through the entire schedule and brings everybody, which is great, but uh, it can, it can be tough to balance that with a conservative budget.
Then you don't buy new buses and put their roofs on.
Right, right.
And the additional.
Ties your hand on other issues.
Factor is that, that 40,000 is going to continue to increase.
Correct, yeah.
And, and that's when you start multiplying that out to, what was it? 3% cap every year based on.
Based on inflation.
Inflation. And when you start adding 3% every year, it really builds up. And so there's, you know, what they're saying is you're going to have to compress your salary schedules. So the, the younger people are getting more, but the older people are getting less. And that's not. What they do is based on our, on our schedule.
So we want to try to be fair. You know, you want to, you can't, nobody can go backwards. Like you can't, you can't send them backwards. I saw, and I've seen probably 40 different salary schedules. And every district has their own salary schedule, so there's a lot to look at. Some will have three columns, like bachelors, masters and specialists maybe, or whatever. So some of them are really tight, some of them are really, you know, ours is, is pretty, pretty robust. So um, that will take quite a bit of work to change that and do it in equitable fashion, but uh, that's, that's what we'll try to do for next year. Or at least move that direction. It may be something that takes us a couple of years to get to 40,000. I think that grant's still going to be there. It's there for this year. I would hope that it would still be there for a couple of years, but you just never know.
Conservatively staffing the district, that's also another way to.
For sure.
Try to offset.
For sure, smaller population, but we're going to, we're going to take care of the population at half. Yeah. Okay, other thoughts or questions about the salary schedule? All right, so I'm going to go over to the computer here in a minute and, and you guys can help, I'll put in some real time numbers, but I want to show you kind of just some basics on this first. This, some people in, in St. Louis, they were, some background, they were two board members, both with financial backgrounds, um, that really got into, to the school finance side of things. They helped their board out and then felt like this was a really helpful model. So they've offered it to other districts free of charge. They just want to help out. I went up there and was, was trained with them for a couple of hours in Jeff City about a month ago. But really this, to me, this hits what I've been looking for, for, for a while now. So um, we're going to look at some default assumptions. So you plug in all of your numbers, what they use, um, they use our, our audit for the last however many years, those numbers on Desi that are fixed numbers. And that's really important because you're looking, when you're looking at the past, you've got the fixed numbers. Now currently, we have to put in our, our assumptions of what those are going to be and then that spits out kind of what your future will look like. We've got a fund balance graph, revenue graph, spending graph, then a surplus deficit graph. So the first thing I want to show you, okay, um, is the importance of salary and benefits on the budget. Huge, huge. And we've talked about this, like that is, you know, 80% of our budget is tied up in salaries and benefits. So um, staff reduction obviously has made a big impact on our chart and where we're headed. So I'm going to show you cash flow model without staff reduction first. So this, if we had gone continued, no changes in our staffing, that would be our graph. And that, uh, nobody wants to see that. So the 20%, that's our goal. This is where we're at and you can see we're quickly out of money in, in several years. I mean, it would take a few years to completely bankrupt the school, but nobody here wants to bankrupt the school. But that's what would have happened if we would have just kept staffing as, as it was. So now we'll look at cash flow with staff reduction. And it looks a lot better.
That's the current staff reduction.
That's the current staff reduction that we have. And I'll show you how I got that here in a minute. But you can see that in '25, we'll be about 17. We'll get back to 20 in FY '26 and we'll continue to rise.
And with whatever unforeseen uh, salary issues we have with state mandated things that go away, like the 40,000 base and all that, that could just be a flat line all the way across.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, I mean, and that's.
That's sheer speculation.
That's what this model is so good for because I can, as I get numbers and information, I can go put that in and it immediately changes what your, what your future trajectory looks like. So I can keep, I can keep you guys updated regularly about where that line is and where it's going. So any other thoughts?
No, when you're talking, you're playing that against the salaries there, whatever. That's, that's benefits, every aspect of the salary, not just.
Correct.
The salary.
No, that's, that's everything that goes in to the salary. Let me show you.
You know, the, the rise in it is assuming that none of that changes.
Right, and of course it will.
Yeah.
Right. Um, and you know, it's fun to look out at 2035, but really, you know, your, your closer years are, are going to be a lot more accurate than what those, uh, what those out there will be. So I'm going to show you a couple of things on, on the spreadsheet. Really interesting what a 1% increase in state revenue would do. Just a 1% increase and their default assumptions assumes normally we get about a 2% bump in our state revenue every year. So they factored in some assumptions, I'll show you that in a minute. But in FY '25, we got $7.7 million in state aid based on last year's ADA. FY '26, they're bumping the ADA at number up to 7145. So just, just on what's going to happen at the state level, we're going to get about 8.2 million next year over the 7.7 we got this year. Does that make sense?
That's without a 1% increase.
This is without a 1%, this is just what's going to happen.
This is what's fixing that.
Next year, correct.
And that's, that's if our attendance or our enrollments.
Is the same. It assumes a static.
Yeah, I mean, it has to. You're assuming numbers in the future.
Yeah, and it may drop, it may drop a little bit.
And that did pass, that increase did pass?
The increase will, they're very confident, of course, it's not been signed into law yet, but Desi's really confident that that's going to pass. There may be some other appropriations that don't, but the 7145, at this point, everybody's pretty confident on. Capital projects, like we can look at that and I can show you what that would do. So if there was ever a time that like, you know what, I don't, we just need a track and so we're just going to, we don't need a track, do we Coach? So we're just going to, we're just going to purchase a track and we can see where, what that would do as well, and then I'll show you a revenue graph as well. So let me pull that up. Play around with it a little bit.
We don't have any capital projects other than finishing our buildings that.
No, not right now, we don't.
There's nothing on the docket or in the future?
No.
What about our, um, the roof that was on the plan and then we took off the block? High school, would be high school roof, was that it?
It is the B building roof is the only one that's remaining.
That's left.
Yeah, so at some point we'll have to address that.
So that might be a capital project on our radar.
Sure.
But past that, I don't.
Marty, that, that slide says with a 1% increase.
Well, that's what I'm going to show you. Yeah, that's just my title of the slide.
Okay.
How do I get my other screen entered?
Should have been there.
Never mind, I got it. You got your phone, yeah. Okay, so I know this may be tough, I couldn't get this on your, on your iPad. You're good. Couldn't get this on your iPad, I'll try to blow it up as much as I can or you can go up there and look at it. I can't zoom in too much, but. So first of all, these are your defaults. Yeah, get way up there.
So.
Yeah, go ahead Scott.
No.
Okay. You retract that question?
My mouth is ahead of my brain.
All right, so you plug all, this has all been preloaded based on our past ASBR reports. So there is, these are the assumptions that it's going to, you know, these are what we've had in the past, the average assumptions for these categories. So you've got your real estate, they're assuming that that's going to go up about 6% next year, which is, is the average. Your, so it assumes already a state revenue increase of 2%. Federal, like everything, 2% is kind of the, the average and we'll mess with that here in a minute. And then expenditures, that that's going to go up about 2.6%. So, and then here's your 20%, that's where that line is going to come from. But that's our, that's our goal. Okay?
And those, those 2% that they're getting, that's, that's drawing from past history?
Yes, yeah.
So that would be the assumption right now is that there's an increase in that?
Yeah. So then we can go over here and this is where I can get specific to what I think might happen. So like on line 30, 31, so funds transferred from unrestricted to capital projects. So I'm just assuming next year that we're going to have a hundred thousand dollars in a project that we're not expecting that we're going to have to do. Okay? So that's going to take a hundred thousand dollars out of what we have to play with. But down here, recurring expenditures, so I put 550,000, minus 550,000 dollars in staffing. So we're, we're gaining 550,000 dollars. And actually the number is over six, but we're going to be conservative and just say 550. And then I've got 57,000 down here for the suburban that we're going to buy. And you see last year, this is with projection 17.52 for FY '25 for our unrestricted fund balance, 19% was 24. And then the projection for '26 is 21.53. And we can chart that with the graph here and that's how we got that chart. And we can chart that with the graph here, and that's how we got that chart. So. Now, if I wanted to go over here to the default and say state allocations go through like we're hoping, and we get that one percent, and I bump that up to three percent, that changes our fund balance chart dramatically. Because that locks in, because we get the majority of our funding from the state. So if the state money goes up, it's gonna assume that that continues that raise and sends the graph higher. On the flip side.
Okay, that, 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 that two percent that you changed to three percent?
Yeah.
Okay, is, that's a state, so, is that increasing our revenue that we get from the state, two percent, and then?
Annually.
Annually?
Yes.
Okay, and is that pretty accurate to what is expected as far as this year as compared to last year?
Yeah, yeah.
And so if you change that to three percent, it would?
In fact, the numbers I did today, like, if everything goes like they're saying it will, it could be as much as five percent. And so if I showed you five percent, again, this is assuming that enrollment doesn't change, but it looks really good.
But.
But that's.
But, yeah, it won't be five percent every year.
No, it won't be five percent every year, correct.
Yeah.
I like that real conservative.
Yeah, well, I'll probably leave it in the two percent, I just wanted to show you what a difference the state allocation makes. Did they really? Shoot.
I've got a question, maybe a little off track and kinda put you on the spot, so, let me know if you need some time to answer there. So you're showing us five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, um, with, with the staff reduction, that's how much we got there?
Correct.
Okay, so on the last audit, we were, and you may have answered this for me already, so it may not be that hard, but the last audit, we were one point two four five million over, okay? Five hundred thousand of it was capital projects.
Yeah.
And the rest of it was salaries.
Right.
Okay, so, if you got, if you just eliminated the five hundred thousand dollars in the capital projects, you're still seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of trying to get there. So if you're being conservative and you got one, or five fifty in staff reduction, what's, what's taking care of that extra to ensure that we come in?
Sure.
In budget, is that an increased revenue that's covering that?
Yes, and I can look more deeply into it, but a lot of that, like, my numbers this afternoon, I had about four hundred thousand coming in, additional state revenue this year, so that would.
So that'll help shoulder that.
Right, and I can show you, like, the surplus deficit. So, like, even though, even though we're, we're going up, like, it still runs really tight, you know? We're still spending what we get.
Which is what we're supposed to.
Which is what we're supposed to do, right. But it's not dropping off like it was earlier.
Yeah, so that five hundred and fifty thousand or six hundred thousand that we heard earlier, or six hundred and forty thousand, okay, does that include benefits, or is that just salary?
The six hundred and forty includes benefits.
Okay.
Um, and that is, I mean, that's the real number.
Right.
But, I know there's other factors, and I don't, I feel more comfortable putting five fifty in this.
Sure.
Than I do six forty, like, I can make it look a lot better, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna overshoot what we're trying to do.
Well, what you show us in the audit to show up the same.
Yes, I do, that is, that is my goal, for sure, for sure. And you'll see, like, the fifty-seven thousand for the suburban, then it bumps up to two seventy, to two seventy-five. So I made sure those are recurring expenses. Like the one hundred thousand, you'll notice it bumps up to one oh two, one oh four, so it's going up two percent every year. There may be, and these are the, these are the columns that I'll have to play with whenever we figure out, okay, we, so if we, if we said, you know what, how much does a track cost? My gosh, a million dollars?
I don't, I don't know if it's quite that much, I, it'd probably, you know, base work and whatnot.
Yeah, let's put in, let's put in eight hundred thousand, and just see what that would do. So we're, we're saying we're gonna spend eight hundred thousand on a track, that's probably not a great idea next year. And it is not. That's gonna kill us. Now, I don't know.
Is that, is that showing that recurring?
That's, yeah, I put that into recurring, so, so let's, okay, let's take that out, let's go back to a hundred there, because those are just things that come up. And then we'll go down here to.
Capital projects?
Yeah, the capital projects. Right, so instead of fifty-seven thousand, we're gonna spend.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, and that keeps the bus line still there, but then you've got that. So we could handle it, but you're gonna have to wait to get back up, so ideally, you wanna put that out to where you're, you're, you're better.
And so that, that chart, that spreadsheet side of the chart that you're showing us there, does that include the two hundred thousand dollars in payment?
Yes.
HVAC payments in there as well?
Yeah, yeah, because it's assuming what we've done this year.
And this year.
Right.
But we just, we just made that payment.
Sure, yeah.
Again, if we gain fifty, sixty students, it's gonna make that look a lot better.
Oh, sure, yeah, but we could drop, we could drop forty of those too, so, yeah, that could go, that could go.
Either way.
Alright, let me take that out before I leave that in and scare myself.
Okay, so are, and, so are like, building budgets, or?
That's all baked into the regular budget.
Budgets, they're not broke down in this at all?
No, that's all, you know, and, and next month, that's, um, that's my financial talk with you guys. We'll go line by line through everybody's budget and kind of what my recommendations are as far as adjusting those one way or the other. So that will be the, and I, I think I have it the last slide of this, but we can either, hey, you can come on in. Um, we can either keep that as a, um, a five o'clock session, or we can bake that into the, the six o'clock session, whatever you guys wanna do on that. But, um, that's the plan for June, is to have, um, the line by line. Yeah, yeah, this is kinda the big picture look tonight, and then we'll just go line by line next time. A lot of that stuff won't change, a whole lot, because the budget is what it is, but that way, you can at least see where we've, uh, either gone up or down.
And you, would you have the ability to show s- some histories in those categories?
Yeah, yeah, yep. Any other numbers you want me to play with here?
Um, I think, I, I, I think it'd be good to look at, uh, utility expenditures also, and.
Sure.
If there's any projected increases in, uh, in those, because.
Or will be.
There would be.
And we've taken on more buildings.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, cause it seemed like the utilities on those two buildings were fairly high when they told us about it.
Yeah.
Although the purchase price was there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the purchase price was there.
Can't beat that, can't beat that.
Turn the heat down.
One last thing I'll show you is the revenue graph. Down here in the actual numbers, it kinda shows you what the breakdown is for expected revenue. And you'll see that's, you know, kinda what I was talking about, Matt, between, as it goes up, like, it's expecting between twenty-five and twenty-six, an eight hundred thousand dollar, I know that's really small, an eight hundred thousand dollar bump in revenue.
Right.
Um, and most of that will be from, from state funding.
So with this program here, I, and the, the charts that you're presenting to us, I feel like we could get a pretty good synopsis monthly even.
Sure, yeah.
Can you scroll back down to that?
Yeah.
Can you show it?
Can we zoom in a little bit?
That's a little pointer.
No.
Oh, there we go. We need you out here to say, yeah, well, that's, I, that's what I was.
Hold down, hold down.
That was funny.
So we're looking at the twenty-six number, right?
Correct, yeah.
About a hundred thousand.
Yeah. Okay, and that's total revenue, yeah. You know, and on a monthly basis, we will need to go through all of this, but we can certainly look at, you know, this one is really beneficial because we can play with, like, what specific items are coming up, um, projects that we're talking about.
So, and it had the bus schedule, you showed us the bus schedule was on that.
So that's got the bus schedule all the way out to, uh, whatever.
Of course, we're not planning on doing it next year, are we? But just, I'm thinking about that B roof.
Yeah, at some point, that'll need to be plugged in, and that's a, that'll be a big one. We could put it, yeah, I mean, so if we wanted to put it, like, maybe in twenty-eight, um, as a one-time expense, so that year, I mean, we're already spending three hundred grand on buses. Um, we'll say two hundred thousand for a roof. So I'll go up to five hundred pounds.
And these, these, these years as they're leaking out, they're following the same trends, right?
Correct, yeah, they're looking at the trends and, and forecasting from that.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we talked about B building, how we were gonna turn it.
I think you put five million in there.
I think I must have, wow, well, there's what would happen if we spent five million dollars.
That's if we built a gym.
In twenty twenty-six, right?
We would go bankrupt if we built a gym.
Yeah, let's not do that. Yeah, I did. Well, there's another example of something we could do, but we probably shouldn't do.
Oh, no, I thought it all disappeared under.
There we go. So that could be, I mean, at that point, we could handle it.
Again, if.
Assuming, right, sure.
The salary schedule isn't gonna stay the same.
Correct, yeah, and that'll be really interesting to look at, when we start digging into that.
You have a hundred thousand on, right now, for next year.
Yeah.
Uh, the B building, we were gonna completely redo it, it's been in there, living quarters, classroom, that hundred thousand's gonna cover it, or?
Well, the CTE grant will cover the majority of that, there might be some extra that we still need to work with, and that would be, yeah, that could be a part of that hundred thousand.
That's not part of that DESI grant.
It is not, no, that's, that's standalone, that's district money that we would be paying, yeah. And we may have to, like, get somebody to come in, like, we're gonna try to get the materials forward, we may have to, to get a third party to come in and.
Kinda thinking if we were doing it, why not, you know, where, where the grant money, the roof could be thrown in, depends on that.
We talked about that, but unfortunately, everything else kinda ate that money, you know? At one time, we thought, okay, if we could do this and still have money in that grant for the roof, that would've been a beautiful thing to do, um, but we're, I mean, now.
All the interior stuff.
Now we're down to sixty grand, and, and that's not gonna, that's not gonna roof it.
And it had to be spent by.
It had to, right, so we were kind of. But the, yeah, I mean, the roof for sure would be something that we look at.
Got it done this summer.
And that sixty-five thousand has to be spent by June thirtieth.
Correct.
Do you have a plan for that already?
Yes, we do, and Josh will, will go over that a little bit when, when he gives his presentation in the regular meeting. Let me take that off. It doesn't mess with that. Okay, anything else you guys wanna see there? And yeah, I'll bring this, uh, I mean, we can look at this anytime, and that's, I would encourage the board too, like, if you're thinking about something and you wanna, like, let me know, and we can, we can put it in, and I can, I mean, I can email it to you during the month, or we can look at it in a meeting.
That's fair, pretty quick.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really.
Can you put in, like, for example, we talked about a gym.
Yeah.
If you had a six million dollar project that you're gonna pay for over ten, twelve years, you could put in like, an annual payment, the loan payment in, and that, that amortizes out over the schedule.
Yeah, yeah, you can put that in.
Okay, can we, cause that's more realistic.
Yeah.
That's more realistic snapshot than just, you know, putting in five million dollars like we did that.
Oh, right, you're not gonna pay for it all in, in one fell swoop, and we could do that for a draft, too.
Right, while we're talking about, but didn't, we applied for a paid grant again?
We did.
Yeah, we haven't heard anything?
No.
We don't, do we know even when we'll hear something?
No, we know nothing.
Okay.
I wish we did.
It'd be about seven hundred thousand dollars a year in ten years, at three percent interest, six million.
Six million dollars, yeah. So, all fun things to look at.
So that eight hundred thousand dollars, as we put it, would be every year, that break, was that, did it bankrupt us?
It did, yeah.
No, it was the five billion dollars that bankrupted us.
No, it, well, the eight hundred thousand, if we did it every year, would bankrupt us too, yeah. There's lots of things that can bankrupt us, we can't do that. Pay no attention to people moving in, but we'll, we'll get to the wrap-up here for this portion of our board meeting. That's just about all I have for you tonight for the financial piece. Um, just kinda looking ahead, um, in June, like I said, we'll do line by line budget examination, and then I'll ask you to approve. So what I'm asking tonight is that you approve the salaries and benefits, so that we can go ahead and finish up contracts. In June, I'll ask you to approve the rough budget, and then in July, I'll come back and say, now, I want you to approve the amended budget, so that we have actual end of year numbers to mirror that.
Okay, well, so in June, we're gonna approve the rough budget for the twenty-sixth year.
Yes.
And in July, we'll amend the budget for the twenty-fifth.
Correct, yes.
Exactly, yeah.
And then if there's, if there's any, um, changes we need to make to the twenty-sixth budget, because I, now I've seen all the real numbers, and I may wanna make some changes based on that.
Well, hopefully by that time, the state will have their.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You'll have more.
Yeah, the state budget will hopefully be approved by then. And then my last question is just, and you don't have to decide that tonight, but let me know if you wanna continue to do the five o'clock session, or if you wanna embed it back into the regular session, I'm good either way, I'm at the board's discretion.
I feel like if we put it in a regular board meeting, we tend to push through it too quickly.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
That's fine, and we may, you know, after, after June and July, we may not need one in August, take a month off or something like that, just let me know kinda what you, what you wanna do. Take a time off, Scott, you like that? Anything else?
Is everybody still good?
Financially?
Five o'clock? Handle, handle that, yeah, okay, good.
Okay.
Just play nine.
We can recess for fifteen minutes, I guess?
Restress for fifteen minutes?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, Manny's supposed to be great.
Hi, Mrs. Medina.
Hi.
This is our new slide director. Incoming slide director.
Glad to meet you. Can we do the picture then?
Yeah, yeah, we can do the picture before six, announce it, so it's not a rush here. Sure, as long as Scott get a. Wants to promote Aiden Outdoors a little longer.
Public medium.
Hey, I noticed you got a new tire or something.
What'd you say?
Public medium here.
Oh, it is. I told him I was late.
And then could you also go to slide uh eleven?
Slide eleven?
Thirteen. It's only eleven thirteen.
All right, I don't know. Just send me the form.
Um, I have a video and I want to make sure that it works and it has uh and it has audio. Uh thirteen.
Is it eleven?
It's thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yep. And then.
You may just push it and see if it works.
Yes.
Okay, so you wanted it at that spot?
Yeah, that's where I want it.
Okay. All right, then I'll back you up unless you're all.
All right, I'm just gonna test.
See how much of this you remember after two weeks.
I'm just gonna test click this. When is it clicked?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Are my judges ready?
Classic.
This is Eric Okerblum. He loves running, playing s- playing soccer and snowboarding in the mountains. This is Kelson Ballenport. He loves camping and hiking with his friends and family in the great outdoors. And this is Alex Brown. She isn't involved in FFA, FCA, basketball cheerleading and leadership. But unfortunately, all three of these people passed away in two thousand and nine due to, due to distracted driving. Hello, my name is Will Clarkston and distracted driving is a serious problem that needs to be paid more attention to, especially among teenagers. And not only distracted driving, but also drinking and driving, cellphone usage, seatbelt usage and pure passengers. When I got my driver license, I had this great feeling of self-esteem. I had the independence and the freedom to go wherever I would like. But the issues that most teenagers, including myself, never think about the dangers of driving. Teenagers are inexperienced at driving, so for them to be drinking and driving is so much more dangerous. Driving under the influence, also known as DUI, is considered as consuming so much alcohol or drugs that you are no longer fit to drive. In two thousand twenty-two, every, for every thirty-nine minutes, there is one fatality car crash due to driving under the influence. You may think that driving under the, the influence is no big deal, but it can really affect your judgment and reaction time. When teenagers are driving under the influence, they are four times more likely to crash than adults. Parents can have a huge impact on teenagers. Teenagers need to know that they can always call or text their parents that they are under the influence rather than drive or tell their parents that they are under the influence. But they're sorry. Uh, but the issue is that most teenager, most teenagers are so afraid of their parents that they would rather, that they would rather drive under the influence than tell their parents that they are under the influence. Uh, studies have shown that parents, uh teenagers that have a close and involved relationship with their parents tend to not abuse alcohol or drugs rather than those teenagers that don't have a close or involved relationship with their parents. In two thousand twenty-two, about forty-five percent, forty-seven percent of teenagers were reported not wearing a seatbelt while driving under the influence. Seatbelts have been known to be the, be the best safety gadget that we have today in a vehicle. And during an interview with Jeff Cunningham, a resource officer at the Willow Springs High School, he stated that students are not being educated enough about the dangers, about the safeties of seatbelts. Seatbelts have been, ha- super, seatbelts have been proven to reduce injuries by forty-five percent to the front seat passengers. And in two thousand twenty-two, fifty-three percent of teenagers were found dead because they were not wearing a seatbelt. Pure passenger is the most dangerous distraction for teenagers, according to the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. In the nineteen nineties, the government created something called the Graduated Driver Licensing, also known as GDL, but it wasn't until two thousand six when GDL was in all fifty states. GDL states that anyone that gets a license can only have one friend or non-family member in the vehicle for the first six months. When teenagers are behind the wheel for the first time, they don't, they don't realize that they are responsible for everyone in that vehicle. The teenagers need to feel empowered to set rules for everyone in the vehi- vehicle. And when there are two or more friends in the vehicle, the risk of crashing triples. Not only is pure passenger a dangerous distraction, but also technology. With the teenage brain still developing, they are unable to multitask. Whether they're trying to focus on the road or uh select their music or chat, uh chat with a friend, they are just unable to do it. When a teenager takes their eye off the, when a teen, when a teenager looks down at their phone, they take their, they take their eye off the road for an average of four point one second each time. Teenagers are unable to simulate two simple tasks. When they have the choice to look, focus on the road or look down at the phone, they more than likely choose to look down at the phone, which then causes them not to be paying attention on how fast they're going or what they're about to hit. So this led me to my project. During my time at the Willow Springs School, I noticed that there's just been a lack of education about the dangers of driving. I noticed that the only time that our school talks about the dangers of driving is our freshman year for one semester during health class and every October when it is National Safe Driving Month. When I was in middle school, I knew some high school students that unfortunately passed away due to distracted driving. And during that time, I realized I wanted to do a project that would benefit students and be memorable for them when they were driving. So for my senior project, I did a mock car crash for drinking and driving awareness. I had eleven high school students involved. I had the Willow Springs Police, Fire and Ambulance Department involved, also a woman from MoDOT and my mentors Jeff Cunningham and Marlena Barker. My project took about six months of planning. I started my project on May eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and I showed my project on October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. For me to be able to have the eleven students participate in my project, I, the school had me create a parent permission form. And that form just stated who I am, what my project is and what their child would do, will be doing in my project. For my project, I had a theme. The theme for my project was prom. The reason why I chose prom to be the theme was because I knew that prom is a big deal for most high school students and that most high school students are involved in prom. I was lucky enough and mentors floral agreed to donate some prom dresses that I could rip, tear and put fake blood on. For the guys, I had them go thrift shopping with a parent and put together an outfit that you would wear to prom, like this. And about a week before my project, I ripped, teared and put fake blood on all nine outfits I had just according to their role in my project. And so here's the after for this prom dress. And here's the after for this suit. So the day of my project, also known as crash day, I first started the day off by setting up the two cars at the crash site. Once I was all set, I had all eleven students go get ready in their makeup and their outfits. Once we, once we were all ready, I had the one high school student body go down to the crash site, which was outside the new gym to watch my project. And once they were all there, I had the two callers call nine-one-one and they were actually calling a nine-one-one dispatcher. And that dispatcher dispatched for all emergency crew members. And here's a photo of the two parents going up to the crash site, showing a lot of emotion because they're having to identify their daughter who just passed away in the car crash. And here is the drunk driver getting a sobriety test with a police officer. And here's everyone that helped me out that day. I have the eleven students in the front row, the emergency crew members on the side. I also have the theater class that, that did the makeup for me. And I have the aviation class and the bare meteor class that filmed my project. And the bare meteor class created a thirty-minute video and pub- published that video onto the school's YouTube page. And here's a short video from my project. So as you can see, I tried to make my project look as real as possible, especially with the parents showing a lot of emotion over their daughter who just passed away. Now, like any other project, there are of course challenges. My first challenge that I had was picking students. I spent a few weeks trying to decide what students I wanted to have in my project. At first, I was gonna have the theater class uh be in the project because I knew that they have experience in being in front of a huge crowd. But then I was told from the woman from MoDOT not to pick a small group of students, but yeah, pick a variety of high school students, which then that led me to have a lot of trial and error on which students I wanted to pick. My next challenge I had was organizing meetings. I had about four meetings with the students and about six of us, including myself, were involved in sports during that time. So I knew that I couldn't do a meeting after school, but yeah, I had to do a meeting before school started, which meant that I had to pick a day that would work for everyone. And I tried to email each student a week or a week and a half advance when the meeting is to make sure that they come to the meeting. I would also grab the students with donuts each, at each meeting to make sure that they would come to the meetings. I also had one big meeting with the emergency crew members, the woman from MoDOT and some students. And I also told each person when the meeting is and picked a day that would work for everyone and gave them a week or a week and a half advance when the meeting was. My next challenge was taking control and informing. I've never done a project this big before, but I knew what I wanted, I knew what I wanted the outcome to be. So I had to make sure that I told each and every person what the role was in my project to make sure that I get the outcome that I was wanting. But with all these challenges, I definitely learned how to be more flexible, more organized and how to take more control. With all that being said, distracted driving is a serious problem that needs to be paid more attention to, especially among teenagers. When I finished my project, I had multiple high school students coming up to me telling me that my project has now changed the way that they view driving and that they now try to focus more on the road and not on their phone. If, if these three people were more educated about the dangers of driving, they would be in their thirties and with us. Thank you. Do my judges have any questions?
So Will, can you tell us what you learned from the senior project experience?
Um, I learned that.
It can be, I mean, obviously you learned a lot about distracted driving, but just that you can take with you after high school.
Um, I learned how to be, yeah, like I said in my challenges, more organized, more flex- flexible and more uh talking to elders.
What, what was the uh, the rule there about they can only have one friend in the?
Yes, the Graduated Driver Licensing.
Yeah, and how long does that last?
Uh, for the first six months.
For six months, yes. I missed that somewhere along the way, I really haven't brought that up. Appreciate it.
You picked a great cast. The Spencers were very, very dramatic.
He broke his, frightening.
He broke his, he broke his glasses and his nose.
Your cast went all in, so, so kudos for that.
Great topic.
Yeah, great job.
How do you feel the school could better educate? Need more classes, more time on it or?
Great question. So I've been thinking about this actually a lot recently. So I've been thinking, so um, there's just some simple ways that we could do it. And uh, when Ms. Jenny does her weekend announcements, I feel like she could also add, drive safe, be responsible, we want to see you, we want to see everyone back next week. I feel like that helps students think, well, what am I gonna do this weekend? Who is gonna be driving this weekend? Am I gonna be responsible for driving? And I think it helps students think, oh, these people want to see us back next week. I also noticed that the school, we only talk about the dangers of driving in the first three months of school year, which leaves about five months left that we're not talking about this topic at all. So I think if we did a project like this, twice a year maybe, like one in the fall, one in the spring, that would, that would, that would be great. Or if that's too much, then we can just do this project in the fall. Then in the spring, we could do a project called um Every Fifteen Minutes. And that's where you take a student from class every fifteen minutes and you act like they're gone. And um, no one can talk to them, they cannot talk to anyone unless it's a teacher or a staff member. And then like at the end of, end of the day, you have like an assembly and you um have like a memo- memorial as if they just passed away.
Is that a program or is that something that you came up with?
Uh, it is a program, yeah.
We'll try and, I mean, for all of them or if we had to do one, what would be?
Um, I would definitely do the thing with Ms. Jenny. I think that's just a simple thing that we just do at, every weekend that just reminds students. But then I think um, if, I think the Every Fifteen Minute would be a new change for the school to see.
How about uh ideas on involving parents? Because you mentioned how important it was and influential parents are on driving habits.
Um, I think we can maybe have like a open showcase to the public. So then parents can come in and see how the, how they, their driving habits can affect their children.
If their kids see them driving, looking at their phone, they're probably gonna do the same thing.
Most definitely.
Yep. Thank you, Will.
Thanks, Will.
And who were the other two first place? Sophia Barrett and?
Sophia Barrett and Mary Spencer. And then Madison Bay and McCollins and Adele Carrington were our six. And all of our kids did a phenomenal job. Uh, that's one of my favorite nights of the year and just uh always amazes me how our kids step up on senior project night and do such a, a nice presentation.
All right, we're ready to go on to administrative.
Yeah, I've got a few things um before we get into principal reports. Um, I'm gonna play your MSBA reports and then uh talk about just a couple of other things before we let principals talk.
Welcome to the May edition of the Missouri School Board's Association's Board Report. If you're a newly elected board member, welcome aboard. If you've been around a while this time of year, it's your chance to keep growing with multiple training opportunities from MSBA's Leadership Development Team. MSBA's Leadership Development Associate Executive Director Catherine Whitaker says that new board member training is about more than just fulfilling those training hours.
So the first big thing is new board member training. Um, that is something that is legally required. It's in state statute. Eighteen and a half hours, which is a lot of training, but I think that's good. It's really important. Um, it's also a great way to make connections. Um, we are an association for school board members and then also get connected to other school board members who are serving for the first time as well.
During MSBA Summer Summit, there will be a workshop just for school board presidents.
And so during that workshop, we're gonna cover parliamentary procedure, which I think is great for anyone who's a new leader or someone who's vice president for the first time looking to be president at some point. Um, just to know how to run meetings because you may have to do it if the president's not there. Um, we're also gonna talk about how to onboard new um board members during the workshop. And then also just talk about leadership as a board president in general. It's really hard to do that job and I don't think we talk about it enough.
For all board members, Catherine says that there are some misconceptions about refresher training and when to take that.
So there's a common misconception about both kind of new board member training and refresher training that somehow it lines up like with a calendar year or with the school year. Um, but actually, refresher training or board required training resets every election, so in April. And so the new, new board member training begins now. And so same with refresher training, refresher training, the new one begins now for twenty-five, twenty-six. And so even if you finish refresher training a month ago in March or two months ago in March, um, it's now time to go ahead and do the twenty-five, twenty-six. You might as well knock it out now so you don't have to do it until the next election in April.
Catherine also says that as summer approaches, it's a great time for boards to engage in professional development.
Um, so districts kind of take the summer off or students get the summer off. Um, but teachers actually do professional development, administrators do professional development. I believe school board members should also take the summer to do professional development. And having a summer retreat, I think, is totally valuable, especially if you have a new superintendent. Having that retreat with them in July to set expectations, you're onboarding a new employee, I think that's really important. Um, but also you may have a new board um or a new board member. And so getting you guys as tight as you can during the summer when it's a little less stressful will really help you all survive the ebbs and flows of the school year moving forward.
Visit the MSBA website for the dates and times for all of the training opportunities that Catherine mentioned. One of those opportunities will be during MSBA's Summer Summit in June. Make plans now to attend June sixteenth through the eighteenth in Branson at the exciting new venue for this year, the Hilton Branson Convention Center on the Landing. Join school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. The summit's general session features Jean Becker, who was President George H.W. Bush's Chief of Staff for nearly twenty-five years. She's the editor of Pearls of Wisdom by Barbara Bush and the New York Times bestselling author of The Man I Knew. Her latest book is Character Matters and Other Life Lessons from George H.W. Bush. Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. Registration information for the Summer Summit is also posted on the MSBA website. And finally, if you follow MSBA's Facebook page, you may have seen that Neo Show had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a brand-new state-of-the-art agricultural center on May first. Watch the Facebook page for that full story coming soon. Like and follow the MSBA page to see stories of the amazing things happening in Missouri's schools every day. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time in your board meeting and we'll see you in June.
That's nice for Neo Show.
Welcome to the May editions.
I don't have a fancy lunch here this week.
Okay, well, before we get to the student rep, um, just a couple of things. The Bear Council, the first meeting of the Bear Council will be May fifteenth. That's the name I'm giving it. Um, that may change, but that's a community group. We've got eight representatives from the community. On that council, we'll meet Thursday at five here at the boardroom. Um, you guys are welcome to, to pop in if you'd like. Um, I'm just gonna kind of give them some, um, an opportunity to ask questions and get some feedback about the school and the community. Five o'clock on Thursday, here at the boardroom.
This Thursday?
This Thursday. Got a pretty good cross-section, I feel like, of, of business owners and parents and people that aren't directly associated with the school, but definitely involved in the community. Uh, so I'm anxious to kind of hear their feedback on, on what's going on here. Uh, legislative update, I gave you that uh, that's the language from Senate Bill sixty-three, which we had talked about previously. That's participation in public school activities from students that are not attending public school. That passed, um, so we are waiting for Misha to give us some guidance on that. But um, I don't know how much guidance there's going to be. Basically, we have to let, um, if you're a homeschool student or a, a student from another entity in our district, you will be able to play sports or participate in some extracurricular activities. There's some provisos there and, and some different uh language. And we can talk about that more next month when uh Coach James will be here with his athletic report. And I'm sure he'll have some thoughts and comments about Senate Bill sixty-three. But that did pass, it just waits the governor's signature, so. Um, I don't know how much impact that's gonna be in Willow Springs, but there will be definitely impact um across the state.
So the decision's no more, it's not local anymore, they've made it for an inside level?
Correct, correct, yeah, because we've always had it locally where um you cannot participate unless you were a seated student. Um, but that is no longer the case. And then the last thing I've got is just a wellness recap. Um, Mr. Gump sits on the uh, the Wellness Committee and uh we uh, with Nurse Forrest this year instituted a, a new wellness challenge to our staff. And we had twenty-five staff members compete in one or more challenges this spring, all healthy. Challenges, fourteen staff completed four of the five opportunities for challenges. One of those was the biggest loser and Chris Cochran was our biggest loser. And I could, I'll let Dr. Johnson make a joke about that, but uh. Our staff really did a nice job kind of buying into that and it was a good opportunity to encourage some health and wellness within the district. Any questions?
Do you want me to stand up a little?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
You shouldn't have asked.
Yeah, I should, I should just go see that.
You did, so now I'm gonna let you out, stand up.
It's okay. So, I will say, one of the details I got before school ended, since schools ended, I don't really have a whole lot of details for you guys. But um, the last high school, um, we haven't officially came up with a name yet, but we're working on it, are uh, what is the word? Student Advisory Council, that's the word. Um, we all got together and we went to go talk to local businesses and we're getting together incentives for kids who have three-point-oh GPAs, have good grades, have no discipline issues, everything. We had talked to public, or we had talked to the public about uh getting some incent- incentives together and I think pretty much most of them are onboard. Um, we're gonna talk back in August and make sure that everything's still going good. But as of right now, I think, I think we can get some good details on them, but that's, that's literally it.
Incentives to come to school?
Um, incentives to get good grades, have good, everything really. I mean, no discipline, I mean.
Is it gonna be called Win the Den? Is that what I heard? Is that a different thing that you, okay, sorry.
I was about to say, I, no, you're okay, you're okay.
You should definitely steal that name.
Yeah, but maybe we should.
It's up for grabs now.
Uh, so, just, just, so I fully understand. You guys went into the community, you asked the community businesses to provide whatever their product is or some, something to the school district to encourage things like grades and is that what we're doing?
Yep, like, we went, I guess the best explanation would be like, you go to Dollar General, hey, you can get a coupon for like twenty-five percent off on chips or something, you know? Something just, something to hopefully get our, get our grades up and, you know, discipline down. Yes, yeah.
Cool, grades up, discipline down, that sounds great.
And I can, I can add off that. I, uh, Mr. Schmidt and I took the, the advisory council um kids and we went to a lot of local businesses. Um, you know, what we did, it's a semester deal. It'll be, we're, we're kind of thinking of it as like, almost like a card. Kind of like, you know, you think of the bear cards, kind of like a card situation. Um, and we're students, like she said, Toby said, where if they meet this certain criteria in that semester as far as not, I, I got the list in my office, I should have brought it down, but you know, it's grades, it's no discipline, it's attendance. Um, then they, they qualify for this card. And you know, you know, maybe, you know, if you buy a pizza, you get a free drink. Or if you buy something McDonald's, you get a percentage off. I mean, we went to just about every business that you would think of that would, that would work out for a, a card like that. And um, so every business I went to with the kids I went, they, they said, yeah, so we're gonna check back um in August, early August before school starts. Um, and try to get that together and just, just try to give kids a, another reason to, you know, I, I doubt it's gonna be anything just mind-blowing on there, but you know, for kids, if you get a, you know, a free large drink when you buy something at McDonald's, you know, they may use that and they may motivate them a little bit. Um, so that's kind of what we're thinking. Yeah, we don't have a name for it yet, but it's, it's going to be some form of a card. And I think it's gonna work out, so.
Hey, I'll take a large.
Well, we got something else going called Win the Den, so we can't really take that.
We appreciate Toby. We're gonna give her a couple of months off for the summer and then she'll be back in August to give you a full PowerPoint.
We, I will, yeah. I'll have a date to slide to her next time.
Thank you, Toby.
Go high school first.
We'll stand up here. It's the first time I've had to stand up. Um, so high school, the last month has been, you know, we're out of school now, but it was hectic and crazy for the last month. Some things, some highlights. Um, we did have Senior Project Night, which you had Will there. Um, for those of you who were there, they were able to judge or just be around. It was a great night. Um, and you see some of those kids that are even, like, you have to twist their leg all year to like, hey, you gotta get this done. There was a lot of kids in my office and uh that I was trying to motivate them to finish it up. And then one of them, it was kind of, it was kind of a good moment. He came by my, came by me in the hallway after he got it done and he said, he said, I did it. He said, I got, I got it done. And I was like, well, I said, that's good. I'm proud of you. So um, it was a great night. Um, you obviously, we had, I think it's, we had a three-way tie and they were all three hundred percents. And I, I don't think that happens very often. But you know, you kind of, when you watch them, when you, I watched them all, uh, they, they presented to the juniors and you can see why they got a hundred percent. They were great. Some of uh, some of the best ones I've seen this year. Um, we had our senior banquet, senior ward night, um, a lot of stuff with seniors. We had senior trip, went to Branson uh for the day, for, for half the day. Uh, we went down, they spent some time at the tracks, the landing. They got me on the go-karts for some reason. I, I decided to go out there. That was, they'd been waiting for that. I got wrecked quite a few times. And then we uh, we went back to Springfield for a movie and ended up at the Big Shots uh golf, the golf hitting place. And it was, it was a good night and for, I think it's probably, I think out of sixty-four seniors, I think sixty kids went. Um, and that's something that, you know, usually doesn't happen, that we're, we're kind of looking at numbers and, you know, only four people not to go. That, that was a big involvement for them. They had a good time. Um, obviously graduation, it went great. Uh, and then we had, the following week after graduation, came back uh to the final week of school with our seniors. We had probably the most hectic day, my secretary Jenny's favorite day, if you guys heard about it, uh Transition Day. Um, it is, it is crazy because we jam in uh two full days into one. We bring the eighth graders over, um, and they get to experience uh going around and visiting their high school classes. And that's kind of, kind of taking place of freshman orientation at the beginning of the year. So we bring them over um at the end of the year and they actually go through their schedule for the, for the coming year. And then they kind of get an idea of, you know, and even the upperclassmen too. I mean, everybody else goes to their classes too and then, then we do schedule changes after that because kids can kind of get an idea of like, oh, maybe I don't want that class next year, maybe I do want that class. So that is, I, I find that very beneficial. It is a hectic, crazy day, but it is beneficial. Um, we did uh last week's school's Teacher Appreciation Week. We did, last week's school is Teacher Appreciation Week, just a little bit. We did something every day for our teachers, we couldn't do it without them. So the, the least we could do is, uh, give them, I think, we had drinks and we had food just about every day. I fried fish, me and Officer Cunningham, we fried stuff Thursday, so much frying that I was done frying by the end of the day. Mr. Gumm swung by and had a little bit. But we did that with the teachers. Last day of school, and just last week, and then finishing up spring sports. I know our softball team fell short a little bit tonight, what they wanted to do. Track is, they're into sectionals, I think we got maybe five kids qualified for sectionals. They're having their banquet tonight. Baseball, I think their districts is later this week. I know their game got rained out tonight at Eminence, but everything's kinda winding down then. You know, I think we have, I think in two weeks, we fire up summer, and they'll be, you guys are ever out and about, there'll be kids in the weight room every single morning, there'll be kids in the gym every single day from about the last week of May till school year. So that's about it in high school. Any questions at all? Sweet.
While we transition, if you'll notice, the television has been raised. Thank you Carl Lewis for raising the television for you. Mr. Webb, finally got it done. All right.
Good evening. As you can see, our numbers, we, we're about ten off of where we started the year, so that, that actually wasn't as bad as what I thought. But unfortunately, we, we knew we were down some, but we finished about ten off of where we started, so. You know, it's been a crazy month. At the middle school, there's just been a ton going on. The biggest thing probably that we got through was our math testing, and I think that it went really smooth as far as the scheduling of it, getting those kids that were maybe virtual in here to test, just making sure that that all comes together. We got it done. So hopefully, fingers crossed, you know, I, I hate the fact that math testing is that one-time snapshot of that kid, and we're kinda putting all of it on that one snapshot. I, I still don't like that. But the math testing, the results from that are a piece of the puzzle that we use. So hopefully our kids did well. I know that the teachers did everything that they could possibly do to have them ready, so. On the thirtieth of April, we had the Don't Meth With Me presentation, that's the Highway Patrol and the Rotary, I believe. Arlene Anderson? She with Rotary? Okay, that's what I was thinking. She kinda sets it up, coordinates that every year, it's given to the fifth grade, and then the Highway Patrol comes in and does it, and they do a real nice presentation, and the kids walk away with shirts, and they, who doesn't like a free shirt? So, yeah, that's a good day. Field day at the middle school on May eighth, so the next-to-last day of school. It was kind of a crazy day, but it was organized chaos, and the kids enjoyed it. And then we had our last day of school, May ninth. For teacher appreciation, I'm gonna back up a little bit here and go through my celebrations now. Teacher Appreciation Week, we celebrated there in mid-April for the middle school teachers. Culture and climate plays a huge role in this. They did a wonderful job making sure that we had events planned every single day for the teachers that week. That happened to be a four-day week for us. And so then we kinda capped that off by cooking for them at the end of the week. But they got, there was a lot of things going on, they got massages one day, and they were, I mean, we, we pampered them. So we're trying to take care of them. And I ready results, I was looking at some I-ready results today. I'll have a better idea of that probably at the next board meeting or in August. I'll be able to give you a little bit better rundown of that, but we are, we are looking at that. We are looking at our RTI data, and of course, that's gonna change next year. And I think the, the key with, with our RTI is to continue to be flexible. You know, we're gonna have a new group of fourth graders coming in, their needs are gonna be different. We just gotta continue to be flexible and trying to do the right thing for kids, so. We welcome the fourth grade. We, the day that the eighth grade transitions over to the high school that Mr. Forrest was talking about, we have the fourth grade come over during the middle of the day. It's not quite as elaborate of a deal for the fourth grade, but we do have them come over. We have them go through a lunch, because that's probably one of the most confusing things for those kids when they come over. So we have them come over, we talk to them, we have them go through a lunch, and then we have, we give them tours, where they go around and they're gonna figure out where their hallway's at. They're gonna get a chance to talk with each one of their teachers, you know, kinda put a face with the name and start to figure out, you know, where their space is gonna be next year. So not as detailed as the, as the high school, but it gets them in the building and hopefully gets them an idea of how things are gonna flow, especially in the lunchroom and recess. And the student leadership team jumped in and played an active role in that, and, yeah, they do a great job. So there was our other older kids that were involved in taking those kids around and all that, so. And of course, we had our end-of-the-year field trips and our attendance rewards and all of those things that, that, that take place at the end of the year. So overall, it was a great year at the middle school. Any questions?
You're talking about, you lost ten, was it ten students? They say it was all the same grade, but it looks like all sixth graders.
I don't think that's right. It looks like it that way though, doesn't it? I hadn't even paid much attention to it. I'll have to double-check that, I'll have to double-check that. 'Cause I don't think, I don't think there's any way that that, that's the case, but it might be. Any other questions? No, we sit down.
All right, good evening, filling in. Obviously, our stat sheet's up there, you can see the stats for the elementary celebrations. We did our third round of dyslexia testing, got that finished up. And I-ready testing, it got finished up for the final time. Piggybacking off these guys, it was a busy month from April to the, the first week of May. We celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week the week prior to school getting out. Obviously, we had something, I mean, planned for every day of the week. You know, we, like Coach Forrest said, we can't do it without them, so we wanted to try to give them something each day that they could appreciate and that they enjoy. The elementary field day, it got moved inside, just kinda like it does every single year, it seems like, on May second. I feel like Coach Bunch and all the special class teachers, they did a wonderful job, they had different events. We had some inflatable setup, and I think the kids really, really played to the point where they were exhausted in, in their hour special class time. So even though we didn't have it outside, they still, they still got a little enjoyment out of it that day on May second. Celebrations on the I-ready thing, I did say that we finished up those tests, those, that last round of testing. Every grade level, I do know, I don't know the actual details of it, but Mr. Rogers did state that every grade level was substantially, substantially increased on that final round. So that, that's always good. Kinda like Dr. Johnson said, field trips, and the elementary field trips are a big thing for each grade. It takes at least a month to figure out plan and work around all the sport schedules, and, and we got all those, and I know all those kids enjoyed where they go, where each grade level goes. And obviously, we appreciate the bus drivers and, and those types of things that, that take them in all the chef rooms. Upcoming events, obviously it states there, summer school enrollment, that was as of May fifth. Obviously, we've gained probably twenty-five, thirty kids from there from the last week, just from, oh, don't quote me on twenty-five, thirty kids, but there was a lot of names, just 'cause of dealing with route, route things and those types of things on, on the school bus.
Is that about normal, that amount? I mean, plus the kids you're talking about referencing?
It's a little lower. Yeah, it's, it's low. Now, attribute that to maybe, you know, the pool not being open a week, or whatever that be. You know, it's not gonna be open the first week of summer school, just 'cause we're starting a little bit earlier. But there could be numerous factors as to why that is. But I would assume it's, in our building, it's probably up to two-hundred, or close to it, at least.
That'll rise on the first day of summer school.
Yeah, yeah, first day. Even though we pushed those enrollment papers out three weeks in advance, four weeks in advance, they'll be coming back, or a kid'll, a parent'll show up Thursday at summer school, you know, asking for...
So two-hundred's a normal, or the average number roughly?
Don't quote me on that, but I think that's still a little low. But two to two-twenty-five maybe, I'm not real sure on the exact number or the average number. And then obviously, with summer school, it comes to reading enrichment activities. Obviously, there's more opportunity for those kids to get more, more work and those types of things throughout, throughout the eighteen days of summer school, which summer school does start next, next Monday, May nineteenth, so. Yeah, you can see all the stats and things up there. It was a busy month, busy last month of school. Any questions I hope I can answer?
I don't know if you can answer this, but there's a reading requirement where they're tested the third grade, it's a new state deal, it started a couple of years ago, right? Dr. Spence, you...
Yeah, the, Mr. Ragg, probably.
Yeah.
It's, I'm drawing a blank on what it's...
It's, uh, Senate Bill four, yeah, yeah, I can't remember the name.
If you're so many grade levels behind, you gotta, yeah, reading plan, reading success.
Reading success.
Right, and they come up with a reading plan. And I've wondered if summer school was part of that, any of those plans?
Dr. Johnson, I think, can speak for middle school on that. Elementary, I think there is some, some sort of reading intervention.
Sorry, don't quote me on anything, I'm stadium, I'm helping out, I'm just a sub. Yeah, I think that that's all intertwined, so.
Middle school, it's like, you gotta go if you're on the plan, right?
Pretty much.
That's part of completing the plan, possibly, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I sent him the actual evaluation form, I think he linked it in.
You should have it on your iPad.
So this is like our, thank you, what Desi requires us to give, and it just goes through all the information, my information, the kids we service, and what they are required to do to get into the gifted program. I also had him upload the teacher recommendation form, so this goes out in December, and teachers will fill it out, and then it goes back to me. Ms. Brower does all of our testing, so she's amazing, she works really hard on getting that done within math testing. So like, they get their referrals in, and then she starts testing them in January, February, March, and she actually just wrapped up like the day before school got out. So that's for you guys to read, and then I just put together a small little PowerPoint to highlight. So we took nineteen students to Beta in January, it's a huge trip for us. We go two days, we don't spend the night, we just get up super early, drive up there, and stay super late, and then get back up the next day. And my kids are so excited about it, they love it. So we took students for, we all did academic testing in all grade levels. I do six, seventh, and eighth grade. They can do a visual art category, and this year we did apparel design, woodworking, pottery, photography, jewelry making, anime drawing, or art, and then an actual drawing and some quilting. My sixth graders, like if you just knew that group, they are actors and dancers, and like, they love the performing arts section of it. So we put together a small group that created a dance, and then I had a solo dance performer, and they both scored in the top five, top three, and they got to perform at general sessions, which is huge. If you've ever been in the convention center, it's packed, every chair's packed. And so Molly Pitts was our small, our, our solo dancer. So she actually had to go up and perform a night before we got there, so we didn't get to watch her. So we're thankful that she qualified and we got to watch her dance. And then our small group, which it was six students, they, seven students, and they performed, and then they got to do it again. So that's super exciting. They qualified to go to Nationals, which is in Orlando. And the small group, we kinda mixed it up a little bit, they are going at the end of June, first of July. So they, we have a small group going down to Orlando to perform. Ms. Seiler has kinda taken that over, 'cause both of her girls are doing it. So she's going as the sponsor for that. This was our group at convention, so this is our third year for the CAT program to compete at Beta. And we've had students place each year to go to Nationals. Students, when we got back, they're like, we wanna know what won. So like, we spent several days like researching and going out and looking at other schools' websites to see who placed, and we made a document, so they wanted to do better. Like I said, we're, we're a pretty small group compared to the other schools that come. So there's our small group performing on a very large stage. I tried to prepare them for that, we just, we mainly practiced in my classroom. We would run over to the gym once in a while and hop up on that stage, and they would have to practice in front of the high school students, and they were terrified of that. And I'm like, you're gonna have, like, this is what you're gonna be doing. So it was a good, a good practice for them. So they were super excited to win, to win third place. We went out and they typed up letters and asked for sponsors to help buy some things for us. Bentley's mom, she made the shirts for us out of her business here in town, I'm not sure what the name of it is. Bentley White's mom, down by the insurance place, she does screen printing. So she made the shirts for them and donated them. And there's Molly doing her solo, and she likes to, she placed second. She did not place, but she did apparel design, and it was amazing. Her jacket, I don't know how she didn't place, because it was one-hundred percent student-created, and it was super cute. So she's wearing that around. This was recyclable art by Adeline Seiler, so she took one of her old dance shoes and turned it into something different. So this is just a few highlights continued. My seventh, eighth graders were given the opportunity to be the teacher for the day. They chose a topic of interest, researched it, and then created a hands-on activity to go along with the presentation. We learned all about fishing and how to correctly cast a line. And we learned about unicycling, and we went outside, and if they wanted to try it, they could try. How to hand-sew, that one was really fun. And then how to correctly shoot a free throw, and we had a five-on-five little game. We learned about marching band and how to march, and a lot of other fun things. My sixth graders, like I said, the seven of those, six, seven, seven, they created their dance, and it was one-hundred percent student-created, so they worked super hard on that. My fifth graders worked a lot on creative thinking this year. To see their creative thinking from August to May, it was so much fun to watch that. Like, they would get better and better each time that they would do a task, and they were like, really proud of it. And they'd be like, can you email this to my mom, can you show this to my mom? I don't know why they couldn't take it home, but that was the, the communication was, can you show this to my mom? And elementary students worked on what it means to be gifted, creative thinking, and how to go along with others, critical thinking, strategies, and activities, and so much more. And this is probably the most exciting part, there were twenty-nine students referred to the gifted program this year. We did have one parent who declined. And October, Ms. Brower and I go to all first grade classrooms, and we give them the Sages test. And Ms. Brower shared this information. Eleven students were identified as highly likely or likely. Five of those actually qualified for the gifted program at the end, once she went through all of her testing process. So we felt like that was a really good accuracy on identifying kids. She said one student missed it by one percent, and we will retest that student in third grade. We also had a student that was identified through Sages to be twice exceptional. So that's gonna be something exciting for us this year to work together with the Special Ed Department to meet this child's needs on both ends of it. We have fourteen students, so fifty percent of the students that, who were tested, that passed all three of the requirements and will be joining the CAT program next year. So that puts us close to sixty students serviced from first grade through eighth grade. Of course, I think, like I said, some of them, we lost four students going to high school this year, so that was the only, the only thing. But Ms. Brower said that last year, she only, only three students qualified. So to go from three qualifying to fourteen is, it's amazing, so we're excited. Do you have any questions?
Which is twice exceptional.
So they will have a learning disability, and they will be also gifted. And when I talked to that student's mom, I was like, you know, she's like, wait. She actually called me when his paperwork went out, and she said, I, I just got a phone call about this. This seems like on the total opposite end, and I'm like, yep, that's probably what it is. And she said, well, I noticed his gifted tendencies at home, she's like, he's an outside-the-box thinker. So I'm excited for that. And I have to talk about...
So, and it's the same requirements, like nothing changed with the requirements to go from the fourteen to the one, same stuff?
Yep, it's the same. Yeah, just different. Like I said, we didn't have any first graders this current school year. And so I helped with first grade on, like, some site words, so... So I got to know those kids, and I could see it. I was like, okay, yeah, that kid's probably, but yeah, it is the same test.
Okay.
Nice to meet you, Mayberry.
Okay, I'll be asking the board to approve the salary and benefits for FY twenty-six tonight. We've talked about that last month. We talked about it in our financial meeting. So just kind of a, bit of a recap here. Unfortunately, no change to the salary schedule. Movement will be allowed for both certified and non-certified employees. Will increase, or my recommendation is to increase the insurance cap to match the increase in the base plan. The impact of that change, approximately seventeen thousand dollars. And of course, that depends on summer. That's the movement of that, approximately seventeen thousand.
Is that significantly less than what we had discussed?
It is, yeah. So that's new math.
New math?
New math.
I get that.
I got with the, the person in the office next door, and we, we ran those numbers again, and that is significantly lower.
Okay.
And there will be some summer variables with people getting new, new college hours and new degrees, and that'll factor in. But if we were to take what we have this year and move it across, that's what the-
You may have answered this question earlier. What did the increase in insurance, what was that cost for the district that were picking up?
Yeah, I had that.
I thought maybe you did it earlier, I just forgot about it.
Thirty-some thousand?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
So that's not factored in?
Yeah. That is not in that, that's movement change, yeah.
So we're looking with the two close to fifteen?
Yeah, yeah. Here you go, I have it. Forty-two.
Cool.
Okay.
So forty-two, four-twenty-six, that's the, again, that's FY twenty-five number, so, and that's why we're saying thirty some, because we're gonna have about fifteen less staff on that. So that's gonna decrease that number considerably from, so it will fall in the thirties somewhere. So current cap of four-eighty-five, fifty, proposed to increase to five-twenty-eight, fifty. And that's off the base plan. Any questions about salaries and benefits?
What's the feedback on faculty on the change in the insurance of having two plans to choose from?
So far, it's been positive. Manny feels a lot of the insurance questions. I didn't hear anything negative, really.
I haven't had a lot of people go to Mercy.
Yeah, Cox is very much where people are staying. Have you had anybody go to Mercy?
I have, I don't have my report yet.
Okay, yeah. Anything else? Okay.
All right. CTE.
Yep, and you'll point to the, my computer instead of TV.
So we're gonna start off with a couple of programs that I don't normally talk about, but we did have some activity right at the very end of the year that I don't know that Toby got a chance to cover. Hey, Kirsten.
Hey.
So I wanted to kind of recognize FPLA. I never really speak on, on their behalf. Had fifty members this year, twenty-three of them went to state, so that's almost fifty percent. That's a very impressive percentage. Ashing Grady was a top fifteen in state in interaction social media. Daniel Wakalaba was seventh place in state in intro to IT. And Andre Porcinco was a tenth in state for network design. And FFA ended really strong also. So some quick stats on that. This bottom photo, which you're looking at right there, that was from the banquet last Thursday night. I think that's the competition teams, if I remember right. Toby's probably there somewhere on the floor.
In the back.
In the back?
Yeah.
So one hundred and fifteen members of thirty students competing at state level. Six of those students earned their state degree. I, I think that, if I remember right, that's a personal best for our ag teachers. I don't think that they've ever had a year where they've had that many earn their state degree. That's very impressive. And then, and then Colton kind of hit a home run there with earning a spot on the state officer team. If I remember, I think that's point zero-zero-one percent-
Yeah, correct.
Of ag students in the state ever achieved that. So incredibly impressive for our, for our advisors and for, for Mr. Staba, both. That's well done, for sure. So Dr. Spence asked me to put together some enrollment numbers, kind of comparing this year to next year. So I didn't add every program we've got. So the business classes are not on here, our agriculture classes are not on here, our fax classes aren't on here. I can get those if there's any interest in those numbers, if those need to be looked at. This predominantly focuses on some of our newer programs that we put in place over the last couple of years. And the twenty-five, twenty-six numbers, that was as of Friday afternoon. So that was after transition day, the kind of the craziness that Dustin talked about. There's always some shuffling around after transition day of student schedules. And if there's any questions on any of those, I'll give you guys a minute to kind of look at that. I may or may not be able to answer them. And some of these, you can, as you can note, you know, there are a few programs this year that, that's the first year that's offered, so that's what the NA is in twenty-four, twenty-five. That's why there's no numbers there.
Where's the rest of that one?
We're actually, we're gonna, that's coming up, so, yeah. We will, we'll let Mr. Knapp explain that. That's something that, that he's been working passionately on for a long time that we're really excited about, so.
Are they, I mean, like, so your engineering kids, are they a lot of the, I mean, are they the same kids that are taking aviation, or are we dealing with different, like, do you tend to see just the same group?
Some, there is some, there is some crossover, for sure. I don't know what percentage, I guess, in those classes, but yes, then those two programs, there's definitely some parallels there, for sure.
And I'll say that one of the things kind of negatively impacting our engineering enrollment, like for next year, I've got two kids who could move on, but they're also gifted kids, and they want to take college dual credit courses, they want to take other advanced classes, and there's just not enough room in the schedule for everything. I got, I got two boys that would, they're, one of them especially is the best engineer I've got. They just can't fit it in his schedule. So it's, it's not a lack of interest, it's just a matter of-
Scheduling is a struggle. And I mean, that's, that's one of the things that, that we have, with Ms. Patton's help, we, she has spent a lot of effort this current year, and then even looking at the next year, making every possible change that we can to make sure that we're not eliminating some students. It is difficult, like Matt said, whenever you have some really bright students, especially when they look at, at building Roman Classic, because those are only certain blocks, and we don't really have a lot of availability to move that around. Also, it's really difficult whenever you have students that want to be in everything. That's a blessing and a curse. You know, that's exciting to see that, but at the same time, it's, it's a nightmare to try to work the schedule where you can get them in everything, too, so.
Our engineering group is, the base is getting larger, though. So it's always one of those things, you don't get to see the results for a couple of years because you get a brand-new batch of kids in. How many of them will go on to two? How many of them will go on to three? You know, you don't know. But most of those are new, are new entries, so that's good.
However, remember, freshmen can go over there, right?
Sure, yeah. As long as they qualify. So I originally required geometry as at least concurrent enrollment in geometry to be considered for engineering, but I lowered that at another math level to try to kind of broaden the base, and that's, that's worked. And we've even got a couple of kids in there on special permission that don't quite make the math requirement, but I think they can probably handle the program to get them started, get their foot in the door.
System was justice one and two, is that the same class?
It's the same timeframe, so it is taught on the same, the same time.
Same block?
Same block, yeah.
So intro to carpentry one and intro carpentry two, and then carpentry one and two, what's the difference between?
So-
I understand the first two, but-
Age group, so intro to carpentry can be freshmen, sophomores. And then the focus of that, obviously, is to take those students that have an interest in carpentry and let Mr. Seiler start working with them to get them, you know, to a higher level whenever they start carpentry. Another big difference there is, you know, the students in carpentry, because it is a CTE program, they have the ability to work through some industry-recognized credentials. We don't do that with the intro to carpentry classes. Intro to carpentry was a new class we just started this last year with Mr. Seiler. It was incredibly successful. Obviously, you can see his numbers. And intro to carpentry one stayed the same, but you know, there was eleven of those students moved on to two. That would have been a lot higher if there wasn't other scheduling conflicts that kind of interrupted that.
So do you have to take one and two to get into one and two?
That is not a requirement. We don't have that set as a requirement right now for students that have to go through intro to carpentry one and to, to move to carpentry one and two. That's not set because we do have students that move in the district that would be of age, junior and senior, that, that may not have had the opportunity to take intro to carpentry, if that makes sense, so.
So the twenty, and the eleven, and the six, those are all different kids?
Correct, yes, that would be right, ma'am. Yes. Pathways of Teaching took a huge jump, as you can see, that was exciting. Last year was the first year for that program, and, and it was, kind of like I mentioned earlier, because where it landed in the schedule was really difficult to, to fit that for some students. We were able to move that around slightly, and that, that seemed to help with that, so.
What, can you speak to that, that particular class, like what?
Pathways of Teaching?
Yes.
Sure, yeah, it's, it's run as a, as a dual credit program through MSU and West Plains. So their, their industry-recognized credential that they're, that they're presented with the opportunity to receive is they, if they complete all of their coursework through their dual credit arrangement, whenever they, they got the opportunity, when they graduate, they can, they can serve as a teacher. As a dual? Yes.
And also graduate with a pair of-
Yes, yeah.
As well.
Yeah, that's, and it, you know, for, for Mrs. Smith, last year was her first year teaching that. She, it was, again, kind of a blessing and a curse to have one. It allowed her to kind of get her feet on the ground. We obviously built that program as the year developed. So it, it was great for her not to be overwhelmed with a lot of students in that program, and it gave her an opportunity to take that one. They spent a lot of time in different classrooms all over campus. That was one of the things that she wanted to focus on, was to put that student in kind of K through twelve environments and let them have some exposure to all those different grade levels. That's, you know, that's one of the biggest challenges for teachers is they think that they like a certain grade level of student until they get around that grade level of students. So I, I think that was great for, for, Karis Cochran was that student this last year, and I think that was a really good opportunity for her to get that, you know, that experience, so.
So these, obviously, these are projected numbers?
Projected, that's as of Friday, late afternoon. I think Sharon emailed me that, three-thirty on Friday, so.
So like after your, next year starts, then you can give us a-
Yes, absolutely, yeah. So after, and whenever we come back in August, we'll, we'll know for sure.
Is this the classes that we continue with for years, or what's our adjustment of switching out, or?
I do, I'm sorry.
Is this what we're going with the CTE, this aviation, engineering, or we're gonna switch out in a few years? Adjust what the needs are?
I, and, and if, no, we, I mean, obviously, enrollment numbers, you know, those have to justify the courses. So I know that is part of continuing on with these programs. So to answer your question, Adam, as far as moving any of these around, you know, enrollment is, is part of that student interest, obviously. You know, if there's other programs that there's, that there's student interest in, we can explore that, too. So that is what I am planning on, I'll put it that way, for the next couple of years, yes.
Some of it's invisible, too. So like, engineering two and three meet during the same block. If you had enough kids, you wouldn't see it on a chart like this, but it would, you know. So there, there is some movement that maybe it does adjust in some ways that you can't see.
Are all of those, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Are all those year-long classes, like two semesters?
Yes.
Except criminal justice is actually a two-year program.
Yeah, and, yeah, so criminal justice one is a year-long class, criminal justice two is a year-long class, same thing with carpentry one, carpentry two, aviation one, aviation two, so.
And is there, I know there's some certification when they come through some of those classes.
They've got the opportunity to earn those, yes. So that's, that's one of the requirements for any CTE classes, that we have to provide them with the opportunity to earn an industry-recognized credential.
Right.
So, yes. And so we have, you know, we have some, some incredibly robust elective classes, but that is one difference with a, a CTE program that's designated as a CTE program at the DESI, is, is that opportunity to earn an industry-recognized credential. So it's, the, the, you know, it is a, a good way to explain that. It is a partnership, Mac, of, of industry and school. And it's not necessarily, you know, not really driven by the school district and school. It's, industry has a, a large part to play with, with what those industry-recognized credentials are and how the programs are established. So it's a, kind of like I said, it's a partnership.
Were we at two, towards being credited to be official MoTeC, or how is that working?
An area career center? So we're no closer now than we were a year ago. There's not been any legislative change, and I'll, I'll talk on that kind of at the end here. There has been some, some, Governor Keough, and I guess we can speak on it now, you know, he, he has his, I think, three weeks ago, he sent out a, a executive directive to DESI in regard to making CTE education, and I can, I'll paraphrase this, more available and attainable for school districts. That's been the biggest challenge for us. And I, we can kind of delve into that if you want, if I've got time to, to speak on that, as far as the difference in a conferencive high school and an area career center. You know, we operate as a conferencive high school right now. There's fifty-seven area career centers in the state. The State Board of Education put more than forty employees in early eighties, limiting the area career centers, essentially telling DESI they cannot accredit any more conferencive high schools to move to an area career center status. So that was something that the State Board of Education put a limit on. If you ask DESI right now, you know, because we have, at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, myself and Mr. Smith and Dr. Spence, we spent a lot of time talking to DESI, to our legislation, what would prevent us, or what disqualifies us, I guess would be a better way to put that, from being an area career center. Right now, there's, they don't have anything that they can say, this is why you cannot, because they don't have the ability to accredit that from the State Board of Education. So it's not necessarily, that's not all a DESI-directed decision. That, that is actually, the root of that is from the State Board of Education. And we did, you know, fortunately, I mean, to kind of back up on that, we did have, the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, we were able to get a couple of different board members from the State Board of Education here to kind of question them on that. The downside is that since it was done in nineteen eighty, no one that's on the State Board of Education now was there in nineteen, in the early eighties, and nobody at DESI was there in the nineteen eighty's. So all they have is a trail, a book trail of saying, this is what was put in place. At the end of the day, it's money. So the three big benefits to an area career center, and one reason that I want to pursue that, and that's kind of on a, on a Google sheet later on. One is core support funding. You know, an area career center, it's eighty thousand a year from DESI, just for operational expense, just to spend however you want on, on your equipment. The second big one is you have more program freedom. You know, there's, there are several programs that, that we cannot be accredited for because we're not an area career center.
That's the question, where do we hit the point where we can open it up to other schools? Or more to adult, or where we can move on with that?
And the third big hindrance with that is operating as a conferencive high school, as opposed to an area career center, we can't receive Perkins funding from other school district to supplement tuition costs. So if you're an area career center, so essentially, we use the Perkins funds that we receive to help pay tuition at SOMO Tech. We cannot receive Perkins funds from Cabool, or from Mountain D, or Mountain Grove because we operate as a conferencive high school. So those three are the biggest reasons that, and that's, again, well, that's, that's kind of on a later slide. But I, I think this upcoming year, that is something that I, you know, that is, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we, we spent a lot of time with that, working towards that. In a roundabout way, that's actually what led to our line item funding grant that we got. That wasn't really what we requested, but it, that's worked out pretty good, too. I have not focused much on that this last year. Essentially, there wasn't a whole lot that had changed on the state level with that. There, you know, Governor Keough, with that directive a few, two or three weeks ago that came out, I, I, the way I interpret that is that it, it's, you know, it's directing DESI to make CTE education more attainable to, to conferencive high schools. So I'm, I'm interested to see what DESI does with that. You know, the, the biggest issue is if they do move forward, and they, they either remove the restrictions on conferencive high schools, or they open up area career center, area career center applications for conferencive high schools. It will take a lot of funding. I mean, if you, if they continue with core support funding for every one of them, obviously, the more area career centers that you put in there, the more funding that DESI would have to have on their end. So I know that would take some legislative support to do that. There's, there's a, a lot of players with that. I know that's a long-winded answer. Is there any?
No.
Well, I mean, I, I, and I hope I explain that.
I learned a lot there, I learned.
But if there's, you know, if there's anything on that that I need to go back and freshen up on, or whatever, please.
You're just basically saying his directive is one of those things. Again, that's a directive, but we don't have any money for-
That's the problem.
With the directive, like everything else that they do.
That's, and that's what I'm concerned about. I mean, you think the governor's saying, hey, help these schools out with CTE education. I, my concern is DESI will turn back around and say, that's fine, where's our money at today? You know, that, that, I think at the end of the day, I don't know, we've not, I didn't, actually, Mr. Smith ran across that. That didn't even hit my radar. It's an article he found and sent to me a couple of weeks ago. It's an article he found and sent to me a couple of weeks ago, just through the busyness at the end of the school year. I have not had time to focus on that. I'm, we're going to start that over the summer. I think now's a good time to reopen that conversation that we were having back in 23, 24, because I'd like to use that as leverage, for lack of a better words. That's, that's pretty good, pretty good information to have, so. All right. Oh, so moving on to facilities, I know you guys are at the Ag building, I don't know, what, a month or two ago, I can't remember now, and at that time, the shop wasn't fully finished. We did take a, Miss Lee coming today and took a few shots that I, or took some pictures that I had and took a little bit of video. We, we are finally fully operational there, so the welding side of that shop is complete. The students, you know, the last, the last five to six weeks, were able to use that into the building as far as the welding lab and the ventilation system is done. It's been really rewarding, it's been, the students are really excited to get that, they've been looking at that for a while. So it's a, it was nice to turn them loose essentially with that side of the shop. I think she's just got some, some other footage here. Like I said, I know when you guys were there before, we still had, so like construction stuff in the way, there was lifts and sawhorses and cords and I actually had a student in there today that they're working on some organization pieces that they didn't have a chance to do this school year because it was so busy. And we're excited. That's, that's been a, a lot of labor to get to that point and it seemed really nice, kind of at the very end of the year, to get that, that Ag program fully operational.
So schools out and then you had students show up today?
Shiloh's got a student that's helping him kind of over the summer and that was, again, a lot of the new equipment. We, we didn't have a lot of time to spend with organization of the tools and accessories and like actually what they're working on today is a stand for all the vending guys for their tubing vendor, that's, you know, we had those sitting on the floor and he just didn't have a chance to work on them.
That's so impressive that you can get them to come.
Oh, yeah. And actually, he was, he was there early, so I was in the building at 7:35 or 7:40 and I think he was supposed to start a date and he was there, ready to go, so. Ags program, we're 90% complete. The last week of school, we moved Mrs. Ryan, all of her equipment to her new facility, her new room. Had her in place for transition day. There's a few small details, you can kind of go through the list there of, of what's left to finish in, in that room and actually, we've got a, got a video on that. Sorry, I keep pointing this at the TV, I guess. So there's a few clips here and we'll kind of go really quick. This has predominantly been intro to carpentry and carpentry 1 and 2, so that's what we started with there. Obviously, the first step is to start all the demo. That, that room originally, I think there was four offices and a hallway in that room, so they removed all the walls. We had to put in some under slab plumbing there to run the new culinary side of that, obviously repaired the floor. This is the students actually putting the epoxy finish on that floor after we had ground the concrete, removed the carpet glue. They were excited to do that. There's been a lot of labor in the floor. That's Mr. Brown, you guys probably don't recognize him, that's the electrician that's been helping us. He's been a blessing, I need to shout out to him really quick. He spent a term on Koskanaan School Board also and seems to have a passion for, for trades in schools and so he's enjoyed getting to spend some time with the students and he's actually spent several class periods kind of in instructor role, you know, as a union electrician instructing the students there on pulling wire and wiring panels and, and things like that. So, yeah, this is as of today, so this is what this looks like currently. Like I mentioned, you can see, we're still waiting on our countertops. You've got some holes here in these islands, that's where the electric ranges will go in. There'll be some, there'll be some range hoods that come down over those ranges in the islands. There's a pantry door that still needs to be installed, just a few detail, small details. I don't foresee any reason that we can't have this completed here, you know, halfway through the summer. Ms. Ryan is, is very excited to get to her new room, for sure. I'm really proud of how this turned out. The students have got a lot of work in it and it's a, and I think they've taken some pride in it. They were very excited to see. The last month was a push to kind of get to this point where Ms. Ryan could come in and she could have transition day there and the carpentry students were thrilled to see her get to use that, so. Any questions on that while we're waiting on this lengthy video to finish up? So Industrial Woods, that's kind of the next, next program, the next facility that's on the, on the chopping block. We did start on the, on the classroom there towards the end of the school year. We had actually a senior that, that used part of his senior project was to do a renovation in the classroom. The shop portion begins tomorrow, actually. We've got scheduled, if you guys aren't doing anything, but when we're closing, we're going to clean out that shop starting tomorrow. I want to have that facility move in ready at the beginning of the fall semester, that's, that's my personal goal. Mr. Bell has kind of requested to wait till after school starts to move his tools and his materials. That was, that was kind of, again, his request to do that. And just to, you know, the quick list of what's going to happen there, the shop portion, we'll get a coat of paint, we do have to move some of the electric around to, to align with his new equipment that's going to be put in place and then install a dust collection system in that. I did take some, some glamorous before shots of that today, so this is after we pulled the Ag equipment out of the way and what's left is just 30 years of BoAg scum on the walls and miscellaneous debris that's laying around. Again, tomorrow, Shiloh and Grant and we've got some students that are coming in, we're going, we're going to vacate that building to where we can start, start on that over the summer. And here's, yeah, so as far as kind of my personal goals and objectives for 25, 26, again, have Mr. Bell operational, finish up the small things. What that means is we have been, the last two years have been a flurry of activities on that side of campus and we have blown past all kinds of small details that, that really eat at me, I walk by them every day and it's just stuff that wasn't pressing and was low priority, but there's a lot of that, it's kind of piling up. I think we need to focus on some of that. Signage is a big one on those buildings that has been a glaring need and we've just not addressed that. Continue to pursue program resources and funding and then, you know, number four there, that's kind of the conversation that we just had, Adam, as far as, you know, continuing to speak with our, our partners in this to, to see if we can get any movement towards that area career center certification. And then Miss Lee, you know, that's, so down here towards the end, develop a stronger social media presence, that's one thing that, that she stepped up with Bear Media and just as a personal goal of hers that she wants to do is, is, you know, spend more time promoting our programs. We were, we were pretty, pretty blessed whenever Jenny Hayward was right there in the building. It was very easy because she was there and she'd done a fantastic job after she stepped out of that role and as busy as this last year was, we had fell behind on that. With opening enrollment conversations like that, I think it is something that we need to spend more effort on, is just advertising and promoting what we offer, not just our R&amp;H students, but to area students, so. And segueing into Mr. Matt, turning trash into treasure and all that, if you want to speak on that.
Do the judges have any questions?
Yeah, you can actually address me now as Cardboard King, I think is what Josh has, has started to call me. So really exciting thing that we've got going on here this next year, Mr. Schmidt approached me because of the movement of some of the programs, Criminal Justice not needing as much of a time slot, we kind of were able to move some classes around. And Mr. Schmidt came to me and said, you're going to have a free block, what do you, what would you like to see done with that? And I was like, I would love to do a recycling program, we've got the space, if I've got the time, then I can see a lot of benefit to that if I can chase down funding. Mr. Owens is a, is a great, is a great administrator in the building. He always says, if we can find a way to fund it, we can probably find a way to do it. So that was, my task was to see if I could find a way to fund it. So we're going to have a recycling program starting this next year, so like I say, I'm really, really thrilled about that. So I'll tell you a little bit about it. For, I know you know me, but Mr. Schanks may not know me too well, although Olive Bowen is my mother-in-law, so if that's a connection we can make there. I teach project leadway engineering, aviation, I still teach history classes. So because I had the schedule opportunity, I thought, okay, well, what, what could we do here? This serves the school well, it serves the community well, it meets a lot of needs kind of all at one time. So what I needed to do was then just kind of, is it viable? Is it something we can actually do? I want the program to be something that doesn't just work for a year because I found a grant. I want it to be a program that works presumably forever, if at all possible. You know, do we really need it? Are there funding opportunities and all that kind of stuff? So I started researching and what I discovered is surprisingly, there really aren't any other schools doing this. I found one school in Purdy and I was like, oh, Purdy, Arkansas. Nope, there's a Purdy, Missouri. Fun fact, it's kind of southwest of Aurora, south of Monette down there? Anyway, spent some time on the phone with the retired gentleman who leads that program there. He was a great resource for me, turned me on to some things that I hadn't thought of before. Of course, I spoke with the West Plains Recycling Center quite a bit. That didn't end up being a lot of help, but it didn't hurt to talk to him. So ended up finding out that SCOCOG had a grant that I could apply for, so I started kind of knowing about my opportunity maybe late November and found out that the grant was going to be published in January and then I could submit it in February. So that was a busy period, couple months of, of getting all the necessary stuff figured out. I went to their board meeting at SCOCOG, which is in Pomona, in case you've never heard of them before. It's just a, it's a seven county regional, kind of like waste management sort of thing, resource management. And so I went and made a presentation to their board on April 3rd. The max award they can give is $30,000, so I presented a bid for like $29,978 or something. I did not get it all, but we did get 12 grants. So we've got $12,000 coming to us probably in July to help fund our, our new venture here. Most of that's going to get eaten up, so there's renovation of the room that's necessary, even though we've significantly renovated our building over there, there's, obviously we weren't planning on it being a recycling center, so there'll be some changes that need to be made to the room. We got to rip a wall out just to get the cardboard baler in place, just to give you some perspective there. So electrical needs, of course, a cardboard baler is a three-phase system, so we're going to have to have three-phase power put in there. And that gentleman that's been doing the electrical work in our new Ag building will be over to do that. So a significant part of the money is go into that kind of stuff. Then some of the money will be going to Mark Industries, they're out of Rogersville and they will be the people to actually pick up and process our recycling. So you've got to have somebody to sell your stuff to. And I tried to see kind of who different people were using and this ended up being a recommendation from the guy at Purdy and I think it's definitely the best possible opportunity for us. The great thing about using Mark Industries, they'll bring us a trailer that we can load and we can just keep it until we get it loaded. They'll bring us, they're called Gaylord boxes. It's kind of like a, a Big Brother to a pumpkin bin or a watermelon bin at a grocery store. It's a pallet-sized cardboard box. Those are like $130 a piece to buy. They'll just bring as many of them as we need to sort the various materials. So there are a lot of advantages to using them. With the grant paying for the trailer rental and the, the pull fees for them coming and picking up the materials, anything we get for selling the recyclables is gravy. So that's a pretty, that's a pretty cool thing. So what we're going to do with the money, aside from paying Mark Industries and getting the renovations done, we're going to buy a, just a small trailer like from Tractor Supply to be able to pull behind whatever fleet vehicle we have around, that some janky old Suburban or, or Kevin Friedger's old pickup or whatever it happens to be that we can pull around. So the, the basic plan is, and I think this is on my next slide, well, let me say this, we've got some rolling bins. Basically, we're going to park a bin in each of the major buildings. So these will be kind of like the, if you've ever seen them rolling towels around in a, in a hotel, it's kind of the same thing. So we'll have one of those bins in the elementary, the middle and the high. I'm also going to have a really big bin up at Wagner's because they're, they've got room in their stockroom and they're willing to do. In fact, I just talked to them about that today. So that's going to make it easy for us. Basically, what we'll do is we'll put an empty bin on the trailer, run to a building, swap the bin out, combine them, run to another building, swap the bin out. And then while myself and a couple of students are, are going around and picking up recyclables, we'll have a paraprofessional with any remaining students until I get back, so that they can already be, they're processing whatever was left from the day before or maybe even doing a classroom-type task until we get back with the recyclables and then we're processing what we brought in for the day. We also had to buy a lot of PPE, personal protective stuff, so, you know, eye protection and hearing protection when we're running machines in there and stuff, gloves, cut-resistant gloves, rubber gloves, aprons, that kind of thing, keep kids safe and especially considering who all we might have in there. So this is going to happen during first block. The idea here is, for one thing, it's, we are a career facility, so it is, it's a whole set of career skills we're not servicing any other way, particularly as it relates to special education. We'll have some students in there, it's my goal to have some students in there from special education and so far, we do have several enrolled from there. And for some of these kids, you know, their career pathway is probably something like a Sheltered Industries OSI, something like that. This is really bang-on exactly what the career skills they would need to do a job like that. So that's really perfect and I'd be happy to, I haven't talked to the OSI folks yet, we just found out we got this grant here just a couple of weeks ago, so. Kind of see if maybe there's something even we can partner with there. Our primary material we're going to be picking up is obviously cardboard because we generate a lot of it, we'll have a baler to bail it and it pays pretty decent. Right now, I think a cardboard bail, a thousand-pound bail goes for about $38, but depending on the market, they can be as low as 20 or as high as 120. And it just, it's a matter of what the market's demanding at, at the moment. Plastics are not doing very well right now, we'll still recycle them. So in the terms of like, what are we going to take? I don't know. We can take pretty well anything, we can't take batteries and I don't know, Mr. Hobson asked about paint cans, I'm not sure about that. Pretty much anything else we, we can probably take. The matter is going to be figuring out how much can we process with the time that we have and until we've done it, we're just not going to know. But for sure, cardboard, paper from the district, obviously, plastics, cans from the kitchen and then e-waste, at least seasonally, I could see us, you know, at the end of the year when Isaac and Andrew get done pulling all the projectors out or getting all the defunct monitors out or whatever, we can throw all those in a, in a bin and put them on the backside of the trailer to be recycled. The guy at Purdy actually suggested, he said, one of the things they do is a Christmas lights drive, which I would think you'd probably want to do in January. So anybody that's got Christmas lights that aren't working anymore, I think they said that a full Gaylord box, which I mean, that would be a lot of Christmas lights. I think it fetched like $800 or something, that, that many Christmas lights. So it's worth doing. So those are things we're going to look at. And again, because it, it costs $575 just to have them come down and grab the trailer and take it back to have it processed, but since the grant's covering that, again, everything we get is just money in the bank to go back to the school. I think I already mentioned all that stuff. We're going to go, I've already talked to Mitch, we're going to stop by on Tuesdays and Fridays and get GNW's cardboard, that's their big truck days. Wagner's thought that they could probably have me, I think we bought them a three-foot by five-foot rolling bin, they said at least once a week. Currently, that stuff's just being burned. They take it to a burn pile and burn it. So it's helping them out. I mean, it's good that we're not burning a bunch of cardboard, but it's also helping them out on their time and labor and they say a lot of times, they're just waiting and waiting and waiting for the weather to be okay for them to burn it. So that helps them out a lot. Of course, I know Brandon's my brother-in-law, so I'm going to go down to Good Graces, pick up their cardboard and their, he said they, they do like three or four big giant trash bags full of number two plastic every week from all their little prescription bottles, not the ones that they give people, I don't know if people bring those back to them or not, but the ones that, you know, what they're filling prescriptions with. He said Subway goes through a lot of cardboard. I was just talking to him this weekend, so I'm going to give, I know, I know those folks. We'll see if we can get theirs too. There's a good one, yeah, I'll talk to MFA. I want to talk to Foster's now that we know. I didn't want to put out too many feelers, I needed to get letters from people saying we support the program to make the grant attractive. That's why I talked to Wagner's and GNW, but now that we know we've got it, anybody that's not bailing their own cardboard, we're going to talk to them and we'll get it if we can.
You want the public bringing in, you want to go?
Well, so I would love to have public collection and that's community bins. I just don't know how much we will reasonably be able to do with the time that we have. So we'll figure that out. If at all possible, I would love it if we could put collection bins outside our building and let the community come and bring them and I know they're going to drop stuff in the wrong bin and they're going to put stuff in there that doesn't recycle. Well, that's okay, we have a child army, so we can probably get it worked out. And I think that'll be okay, we'll just have to see, we'll feel it out as we go. We'll field it out as we go. But my goal is that this program, even without grant money, once we get it started, it should be self-sustaining. It ought to make enough money to pay for itself. And we'll figure out, do we really need to rent a trailer? I don't know. Right now, we're renting a 53-foot trailer because the grant will let us do it. That's $200 a month. And we could save that. I could see one day when all the shifting gets done, maybe there's a bay in that shed up there by the, the old ag building that we could store our recyclables in until we have somebody come and pick it up. That'd save us some money. There's all kinds of different things we can do here to make it more profitable. But we'll figure that out. Apparently milk jugs are like big money. So we're going to by golly get some milk jugs. We will have, I'm just going to assume at the beginning of the year, we'll just tell kids, hey, rinse out your milk jug. Bring it to school, drop it in the bin on your way in the door and we will recycle those dudes. Cause I want to say it's like, it's like, it's several dollars a pound for those things. Which I mean, how many milk jugs you need to get a pound, but it's somewhere shy of $3 a pound, I think. So you talk about, if I give them a thousand pound bail of milk jugs, cooching. Right? So that'd be good. Be good for the school. Um, I love it. And I've got some ideas for some cool things we'll do. So obviously this is going to be in Innovation Hall basement. Luckily, our ceiling height is just enough to let a cardboard baler run down there. The 53-foot trailer will be parked most likely at the bus barn. There should be room there for it. We're going to rent that. I had to, we had to, yeah, yeah.
We'll figure that out.
Surprise! I didn't come up with that idea. Don't shoot the messenger. So we'll put it somewhere. It'll be beautiful. We'll decorate it up. We'll have Sabrina wrap it and it'll look pretty. I just said something I wasn't supposed to say. Anyway, we had to kind of finagle the grant money to make it work. So I think we'll rent the trailer from September through November, have them pick it up in November and then rent it February through May, have them pick it up in May. And I think that's reasonable. I hope we have to have them come and get it soon because we got it so full that they got to come and get it. So yeah, that's all good. I'm trying to think, I had a thought there that, of something else I would share with you, but it has escaped me now.
Okay, so what kids are, what's this class called or?
It is called recycling. It's open to anybody that wants to take it. Obviously, I think it makes sense to prefer students who could benefit from the career skill. So if we know, for example, our special education department has a, a big group of kids that they want to have in there. I would make sure that was a priority. But anybody can take it. It's not a, it's not a, we're going to sit down and do assignments and tests kind of class. It's like a PE, you know, you need to participate to get your score. Snap your gloves on and go downstairs and start sorting boxes and plastics and stuff. But as far as that goes, when we're not sorting things, because I think there'll be time for us to do other things. Researching what's new, there's stuff, there's new stuff. Ever since I started chasing this grant, just following the news, there's new things every day that are things going on in, in recycling. They're figuring out all kinds of stuff. I just read something the other day that they've got something where they're able to combine malabedinum, which is a, it's a cheap mineral, they put it on bullets to lubricate barrels, with plastic and then just the natural moisture in the air is enough of a catalyst to react. And it turns it essentially right back into the crude oil it was made out of. I know we can't do that, but I'm just saying, it's cool that that exists. And we'll, we'll find out about that stuff and teach the kids about it. Cause obviously this is a life skill we want them to know about and have. But then in addition to that, I think there's some things we can do for kind of that in-house turning trash into treasure recycling. I want to toy around with using our engineering kids to make molds to be able to press like plant planters for the FFA to use. We could use our waste copy paper and make a slurry and then press planters so that people, when they take their plants home from the greenhouse, instead of having this plastic thing you got to throw away. Cause I know we got plants from the greenhouse before and I brought the things back to Shiloh and he's like, yeah, we can't take them back. And I'll, no, that stinks. Throw those things away. Well, okay, so what if we're just making ones and you can just plant the plant in the dead gum thing? That gives us something to do. If it takes us all year to make enough of those things for the FFA to use for a month in their greenhouse, great, we got a whole year. So, you know, there'll be things like that that we can do. Not to mention, you didn't call me cardboard king for nothing. All the sweet cardboard, the really good stuff. I will save for my lasers and I will feed to my laser. We make all kinds of cool stuff. Come by my classroom sometime, you can see cool stuff we make out of scrap cardboard. I don't know if anybody's, oh, one other thing. This grant is annually renewable. So I don't know how much they'll give me, but I will, you know, shake that tree every year and just see. I had to cut $20,000 worth of stuff I didn't get to buy this year. So you better bet, I'll be asking for those things next year. And we'll just keep doing it. And hopefully keep the program alive and keep it growing. And we can do something good for the whole community. So guys have any questions about it? Anything logistical holes that I left?
Just, and you may have said this there, but you don't know what's the most profitable. I mean, milk jugs are obviously.
Milk jugs and cardboard honestly is where it's at. That is where it's at.
Aluminum cans are.
Well, it depends on how many of them we get. And I did talk to, so I've got some folks that I know that are Lions Club folks. I did not want to step on Lions, Lions Club toes. And they said that ever since the Boy Scouts kind of imploded, you know, it's just not a thing. No, I have Boy Scouts anymore. They don't really have enough people to, to mess with the cans. The Boy Scouts were the ones that did it. And I guess they kind of split the profits between the Boy Scouts and the Lions Club. So they've kind of gotten out of the can business. So I don't, I don't suppose there's anything preventing us from doing that. Barring some feedback to this board meeting about aluminum cans. Yeah, there's probably some money there. Now in terms of like scrap metal, I'm not going to mess with that. But the FFA already collects some of that. And I know our maintenance guys keep a pile of scrap metal and they run it and they use that for tool budget and stuff. So we won't, we won't interfere with that either. I think we can do this in a way that doesn't step on anybody's toes. But it just, I, so far, we're just looking like we can help a lot of people out. And I think we might be able to save the district some money in the long run. Not only in terms of getting cash back on the recyclables, but also maybe being able to eliminate some of our dumpster pickups. We might even be able to eliminate a dumpster somewhere, period. We have more of them than you would imagine. So some of those are picked up every single day of the week and that costs us money. So maybe I can save on that. That's the goal.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Great service.
Awesome. All right, then I'm done.
Yeah. I, I've been into someone thing like Roger, Megan, I know like CTE wise, there's been a lot of movement in the last couple of years. If you guys ever want to schedule a time and come by and kind of get caught up essentially with everything that's happened, you know, the last couple of years, look facilities or, you know, we can explain some of the, or explain some of the, the legislative and logistical challenges that we've been working with. I, I don't care if it to work through that, you know, so please let me know.
Okay, back up. All right, before we get talking about this, I was pulling sports off my mic. I completely forgot, boys tennis, they had a little down year from what they normally have. I think Will Clarkson had a good run, a couple at the SCA and districts. And then our golf team, our golf team heads the state next week. It's in Sedalia on the 19th and 22th day event. They got second last year. They won the district. Brady Altimat was second overall in the district. Blaine was fifth. Then we had Brady, Moran and Mark were second team. The team took first and then the SCA, where the SCA champs, Blaine won the overall champion. And then I do believe the whole team was all conference. And then I think they've only lost one meet all year and it was the one I went and coached at and it was Cole. But it was a, it was a huge, it was a big meet at Springfield and they took second at a really tough course to Roger's learning that. They've been winning everything. So I think, I think I was talking to Cole Friday at the end of the day. He feels pretty good about their chances. So Monday, Tuesday, last year, I don't know if it's the same. Last year I watched a lot of the scores update on Nisha. You may be able to check that out and try to keep up them. I think we have a pretty good chance. So excited on that. So we'll talk about this retention plan. This is some questions I know you guys have brought up a few times in different meetings that I've been at or I've, I've watched. With the, with the kind of the overall concern about students withdrawing to go virtual. And you know, Dr. Spence mentioned earlier with the, with that bill passing, you know, that, that raises an even greater concern to me on, on what we're going to do. So we're going to, I'll just talk a little bit about kind of what we've been, Mr. Schmidt and myself and some. We've met a little bit with our department heads. But I'm going to give you some numbers first, just some stats that I pulled out. I had Mr. Jenny help me with for this year. This is what happened this year because we hear a lot of numbers and I think they kind of get exaggerated at times. But these are, these are exactly what we have. So for freshman class this year, and these are kids that signed a homeschool form and their plan was, you know, and, and some of them were going virtual. So when a, when a student, when a, when a parent calls or say, hey, I, you know, I'm going to send my kid virtual. We tell them, you know, you have to stay. Well, okay, well, you have to come sign a homeschool form that you're providing for their education. And if they, they need to stay in school till they're enrolled. Because just because they say, I'm going to go virtual, you don't automatically get in to that. You have to enroll and it's, it's an online school. And it's, it's provided, there's, there's two or three different ones that are provided. So we did have a tendency of some kids just not showing up. And then all of a sudden there are tenants, you know, we send attendance calls and stuff like that. And then they get eventually turned into juvenile. And then juvenile make a visit to their house because they haven't been to school. And they're like, well, you know, we're going virtual now. So they, so they have to come in and sign the homeschool form. And then what they do after that, whether they do go virtual or not, I'll have some stats on that. So for freshmen this year, we had eight total students that signed that homeschool form. Three of them were confirmed virtual. And how we know that, majority of the time, I think all the time, we're going to get records requests from MOVA or, or, I forgot, Mr. Coach Wagner probably can tell me the other names of them. Penn Foster, there's, there's two or three. So we had three of those eight confirmed record requests that they are virtual and they're going virtual. Five of those homeschool forms did not get record requests. And two of the five were ones that I penciled down at the beginning of the year. And I kind of, this is kind of something I kind of marked down on kids throughout the year. And Mr. Schmidt kind of lets me take care of. Two of those five claimed they were going virtual. But I've never, we've never got confirmation of that or anything like that. And, or any, any document sent to us for requests. And Dr. Spence, this is before I was administrator. I do believe that before COVID, for a kid to go virtual, the school had to sign that it was in their best interest to go virtual. And since then, it's been made easy. I mean, just easy. So that was it for the freshmen. Our sophomores this year, we had 10 total students that signed a homeschool form that their parents, they were going to take, the parents were going to take charge of their education. Four of those, we got record requests that they are confirmed going virtual. Six others were left and three of them claimed they were. Like they, they, when they left, they're like, no, we're going virtual. That's our plan. And they took, you know, they took some information on virtual providers. But still out of the 10, only four confirmed virtual. Our juniors, we, we had 10 total students, again, that went with a homeschool form. And we had, so we had six confirmed virtual from the juniors. And then the four remaining, we only had one of those others that said that they were thinking about it. They were wanting to go virtual.
How many was confirmed on the juniors?
Six, six confirmed juniors that we got records, records requests from. And then the seniors, we had four total students. Seniors, two of them were confirmed virtually. I will say this, one of the seniors, we, that went virtual, we had for, he came to school for three or four weeks. He came from Kabul, came here for like three weeks and then went virtual. But he's, I mean, he's one of the two that were confirmed. But I did want to mention that, you know, with one of the seniors, he was, he was here for, I think it was like three or four weeks total. And then two of those said they, or two of those homeschool forms, we didn't get anything. And I didn't, those two also didn't claim they were going virtual. They were just kind of finished at that point. So overall, if you guys are, I've got it totaled up. So 32 total students that signed homeschool forms. 15 of them, we have confirmed that they went virtual. And then out of the 17 left, the remain, six of those were claiming they were going virtual. But we never received anything on that.
So essentially 17 students lost, we don't know what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, they're, that, well, I mean, we, and we have that every year, you know, there's, there's all the time. Parents like, hey, I'm going to homeschool my kids. And then, and they just, they may just do homeschool curriculum, you know, they, they may just do.
So that's different than what you're.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying those seven, I'm saying, I'm telling you, there's, there's homeschool, 17 that signed homeschool forms that only six of those 17 claimed they were going virtual. So I'm assuming that, you know, the 11 are just, either they're not doing anything right now or they're, you know, they are officially homeschooling, which I don't believe there's any, as far as accountability for, you know, for homeschool. I mean, you sign.
You need a parent signature.
You got to sign the paper and then you, you just do what you want. I mean, there's no, I mean, I'm sure, I'm not, I listen, I'm sure there's people out there that are, are doing it well and doing it right. And that's what they choose that they believe to do and that's fine. But there's a lot of things that's just, you know, I, I, because when I see these kids sign these forms, there's a lot of them. I, I know exactly what they're going to do. I mean, that's just, they're, that's just their way of dropping out is what it is. Without giving the, once they get the hassle of the attendance calls and the hassle, then I mean, juveniles pretty on there. Our juvenile struggles a little bit on stuff, but they're pretty on top of that. When we say this student's missed 15 days, we can't get a hold of them because the parents will eventually quit answering the phone. And then juvenile shows up to the door and they'll, they, they literally put the kid in the car and bring him to school. And it's not too long after that, mom or dad up there signing that homeschool form and not dealing with that. So that's the, that's the, yeah, and I've, I've been on a few of those rides. And I went on one at the end of the year where we literally get a kid out of bed and, and said, get your stuff on, you're going to school. So that's the stats on that. And I'm sure you guys have some questions. But overall, you know, there's some things with this that is, that's, you know, it's really out of our control of what we can do. And, and with the state, you know, especially passing this bill that's just passed. You know, I fear that it, it could become more common because it's just, it's really easy. And you know, I'm, and like I said, I, I'm, majority of the time, we hear these names, you know, these kids are talking. They're telling people, I'm going virtual, I'm going virtual. And I've, you know, that, like I said, Mr. Schmidt's kind of put that to me and I know he's done it some. But anytime I hear of a kid that says they're going to go virtual, whether it's this year or next year, like I'm playing, I call them in my office and I have a talk with them and I make a note with them. And it's not, you know, I just, I tell them like, listen, be straight up with me, right? You don't have to come in here and sugarcoat it. Tell me, I want to know why you're going virtual so we can try to fix things. And I said, and I want to know what we can do for you not to. And you know, really the most common answer right now is kids are saying, it's not the school, I just want to go work. I just want to go work. You know, we've got, I know we have a handful of kids that's packed up and went on hurricane cleanups, you know? And they're doing, they're, they're making quick money, good money right now. And they're, they're doing their school, I mean, whether they're doing the school or not, but they're doing that while they're doing that, while, while they're working. I've had, you know, that's the, I really, that's the majority of it is, is work. Some, I have a few students that'll say, you know, they'll give you, you know, you expect your typical answer of, you know, I just don't like school. You know, I just don't like school. I like to be on my own schedule. I, I would, you know, if I do this, I can just, I can get up when I want. I can do my work and I have that flexibility. And that's kind of the second most answer I get. You know, and Dr. Spence, you may correct me on this because I may be off on this. But if a student lives in our, well, that also falls back, it's crazy. I think this is right. If a student lives in our district and they go virtual, we're not getting their ADA correct for going virtual. It gets to the provider who is doing that. And then if they, if they fail out of their virtual, then that falls back on us as not completing their work, as a dropout.
Right, right.
So it's, it's, so it's crazy. So if, I mean, so they go virtual, their money goes to that virtual provider. Then these kids that decide after, you know, two or three months, I'm not going to do my work. Then it falls back on Little Spring School just as a dropout.
That's completely out of our control.
And that, yes.
And there's no accountability to make sure that these parents are verifying that they're doing their work.
Correct, correct. Yeah. Yeah. And so in my opinion, and you know, like I said, I think there is a few, the kids I've talked to, a few valid points. And, and there's, there's a couple of situations that I'm like, and I'm sitting there at my desk and I'm trying to keep them in school. But I can kind of, can see it. But I'm, I'm just going to be honest with you guys. I think a lot of it is, it's just kind of that, since it's, since now it's so easy. Back 10 years ago, when the parents are like, no, get up, you're going to school. Get up, you're going to school. You got to go to school. You got to go to school. Kids fighting them. Well, they still had to go because if not, juvenile showed up. Well, now I think this is kind of the common ground with a lot of these for parents of, okay, well, I'm not going to fight it. And you're still going to do your school now. So, and I think that's what we're running into because it's becoming, become an awful easy. So here's a kind of a plan that Mr. Schmidt and I put together. And we've, we've, we've gained some, we've gathered information and knowledge from other people. And these are just a few things. And like I said, I individually, Mr. Schmidt and myself individually meet with every kid that we've, we've had brought up that they may go virtual and we talk to them. So that's obviously the first one. We, we have conversations with them. Obviously, relationships is, is everything, you know, that word's used a lot and I must throw it out there. Yeah, you know, build relationships with the kids and that may not be me, that's, that may be teachers. And we're going to get to that down here in a second. You know, actually last week, we had a kid that told me, I'm going virtual, I'm not changing my mind. And we got him to change his mind at the end of the year. And it ended up working out like we were, we're going to put, allow this kid, he's been, he's kind of struggling. And we're going to allow this kid to do half a day alternative school. And his big goal was to go to VOTech. So we worked, hey, you're going to go half day alternative school, then we're going to let you go to VOTech. And he said, well, yeah, I'll come do that. So we're having to try to find ways to work around it and get kids to, you know, to wanna be here, to buy in to be here. So having those conversations is huge, um, and we do that. Um, so we've added some opportunities, you know, I think that obviously kids being involved, if kids are involved in something, they've got a more, uh, of a hold to wanna be here. And whether that's any activities or that's clubs or some stuff like that, um, you know, the stuff that we're doing in the CTE, all of our sports programs, all of our, um, we added D and D club, which I'm gonna tell you right now, Dungeons and Dragons, I have no idea what it's about, I wandered, I wandered past their club meeting one night, um, creative riding club, um, both of these were requested by a student. Um, and, you know, when they, when we have kids that wanna add a club, it's like, we, we listen to every one of the ones they wanna add, it's kind of like, hey, okay, where are you gonna meet, when are you gonna meet? Do you have a sponsor willing to help, to be, be the leader of it? And then usually, you know, it goes, so we've added those two clubs. Um, the last year, internships, and this is kind of keying towards, we've always had this, keying towards these kids that say, I wanna work, I wanna work. You know, I wanna, I wanna get, I wanna get right to work. Um, so when they get to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wagner, juniors and seniors, I know seniors, I think juniors and seniors, they can, they can take Maroon or White Day and the second half of the day, they can go do an internship and that internship may be at Foster's Out of Body, that internship may be at a farm or something like that. So giving those kids that opportunity, we actually have some, we have kids that, that go work maintenance on the school grounds, you know, that is their internship. But they can actually get out and do stuff and, and find that opportunity to get out in that workforce like they want, but they still get school credit, so that's, you know, we're pushing that hard, we've always had that, but we're, we're really pushing that, I've been pushing that to these kids that are wanting to, they're telling me like, hey, I just wanna go work, so we've been trying to push that to them.
And that can be compensated for that time if they go wherever?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then we got the win the den, somebody said that earlier, we actually, I think, Karis Cochran came up with this in that, the teaching pathways class, I think Mr. Cochran had her do it, we heard it, we stole it from the middle school. Um, and I, I, this is just something that, uh,
Cause he's the biggest loser.
Right. Oh, this is something we're gonna, I think we're gonna do at the beginning of the year next year, um, if you kind of, just a brief overview, you know, teachers are gonna pick their teams of kids and there's going to be different, uh, maybe some field events early on, but it's gonna be like, there's gonna be points based on GPA, points to be based on, um, no behavior, no discipline issues and stuff like that, at the end of the year, somebody, some team's gonna win. Um, and hopefully to get teachers involved with kids more and maybe, you know, not even, you know, kids that maybe they would have in class, maybe, you know, different, different age level. Um, and, uh, then hopefully that will build some relationships and, uh, you know, get some kids, you know, you, you've got, we got a lot of kids that like to go compete on these, on our, on our teams and stuff like that, but we got a lot of kids that don't do any of that competition and, you know, competitiveness and if you, if you build a little bit of that in them, then, you know, we're hoping that's just something that kind of sparks something. Um, I really like this one, the check and connect, and I think, Dr. Spence, we used to, we, we've done that.
Mr. Napnose.
Like I said, this is an old program, we're gonna try to bring back this next year, it's voluntary, that looks to focus on students who may be at risk of dropping out. Um, you know, this will be something we, we offer for staff, like, hey, would you be interested in doing this, which I feel like most of them will. Um, Coach Wagner does a great job of sending us updated, kind of an at-risk chart where he, he puts in a lot of different factors of, you know, as far as discipline, ISS, um, grades, attendance, and then we have a long list of where they are and even, even does a great job, he color codes them, so I can just look real quick and see if the ones that are really, and so, and we'd also, Mr. Schmidt and I were talking, we put those kids that we're hearing, that are wanting to sign up to a virtual on that list and just put them with a teacher and kind of have them just checking in on, you know, like, hey, build that relationship, hey, how you doing, how's it going on? Maybe not schooling, maybe not even a teacher, it may be, you know, we just put a list out to these teachers, hey, I, I have a good relationship with that kid, let me, let me work with him. Um, so I, I haven't been involved with that, I know, I think that was before, maybe when I was in the middle school back earlier on. Um, so that's something we're gonna do. And then the last thing, uh, that's potential, it's, it's something we've kind of tossed around, the JAG program, which is kind of the same, same scenario type thing, and the only thing that it would cost, you know, we'd have to probably get a grant to fund it because it's finding the right teacher to hire, to do that, the staff person, it had to be, had to be the right spot, and I think we've done that in the past as well.
We have, it's been a while, Missy Reed did it for us, um, jobs for America's graduates is the acronym. Um, good program, but yeah, it would, it requires some, some funding and some, some hoops to jump.
And it's, it's kind of the same scenario as far as like these at-risk kids and there's a, there's a list of criteria, and I was looking at the paper tonight up at my desk and it's a long list of different things they meet and it's, it's everything from home life to grades, to attendance, to, you know, behavior and who would qualify and then this one person, one staff, and they're trying to get them into workforce, you know, get them involved with something. Uh, but that, that's something that's down the road, but I, the, the others are things that we're looking to get into, you know, right away next year. So I'm sure you got some questions, but that's kind of my rundown.
This doesn't help.
Hmm?
That doesn't help.
Doesn't help?
The sports thing.
Oh, no, no, I, I, and that, you know, I haven't talked to, Robert and I talked a little bit today about that and like I said, I've kind of, I've kind of skimmed over the bill since I'm the basketball coach, um, and, you know, I'm obviously really involved with all the sports, but I think it specifies that you have to allow those students to try out. And so that may be something we have to start, you know, looking for, you know, we don't, as far as I know, we don't have tryouts for any team.
We may be
We may have to start doing some tryouts, you know what I mean?
This is kind of sidetracking on the subject here, but, um, is there any criteria that we can require as a district that mimics what our, our students are doing or?
We're gonna look into that and, um, like I said, I'm anxious to see Misha's, um,
So it's passed, but we're still waiting.
Today was the day that it, it was released that, that it passed and now we're all kind of wondering what to do. So like I said, next month, Robert's gonna be here and we'll kind of run over.
And I, I've heard rumors from the, on there that the parents decide eligibility to, to everything, like, yeah, they're, they're great. They're great enough, yeah, uh, so it, there's a lot there and it needs to be, it needs to be dug into more on as far as, but yeah. The sports deal on that, cause that is something, you know, we talked about being involved, you know, that's a lot of things that holds, I'm sure, holds, you know, kids not gonna, and I play on the football team, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go virtual, I can play football or golf or basketball or whatever. Now, because of this, they go virtual and still do that.
Is this something that we could, I know we have to have your minimum stipulations, but could we make ours a little more aggressive?
Maybe, I don't, yeah, I mean, it doesn't sound like it from the way on first reading, but, uh, that's something we'll, we'll look at for sure.
Um, of the, these thirty-two kids that, that left, I mean, is that something you see on a, on a regular year, that's a norm there?
Yeah, and I, and I think, uh, I, Jimmy gave me the numbers the other day, you know, which, you know, if you look at the, like, when I did the administrative report, it doesn't, cause sometimes there's kids going in and going out, so it really doesn't, you know, one, one month, it may not fluctuate at all, but we actually had fifty-nine for the year, she said we had fifty-nine kids go out of the district and fifty-one come in.
Um, and Nine through twelve?
Yeah, and then, I've been the administrator for, this is my third year, and the homeschool thing, i- it's, it's pretty regular, it really is. And I will say this, I mean, it was an uptick this year with the virtual stuff and I'll be honest, we had a few kids early on, um, uh, in the year, like I'm talking in September, a couple of kids that went virtual and they were some kids that kind of bounced around, they'd been in our district and like they were going around to all their friends and saying, this is the way to go, cause these kids would come in and say, hey, so-and-so's telling me like, man, this is what, he's working a full-time job and doing it, so we, we lost a few early on and I, I, you know, that, that, that was the kind of the word going around, like, this is the easy way out, do this, you're gonna love it, you don't have to go to school, so we did see, I mean, obviously you guys knew, we, we had an uptick this year in it, but
Did any of these come back?
Uh, not yet.
Do they have the option of coming back in the same school year if they go out and come back out?
Yeah.
Are you seeing any of that, these people, them leaving, trying it and then coming back or?
We haven't yet, but, you know, we haven't yet, but it, it may be, we may have some next year and then it'll be, you know, they'll want to see what they completed, you know what I mean? We actually had students, we had a couple, I think it was last year, that had went virtual and they, and they didn't do anything. I mean, they did nothing and then they came back and they were, they should have been a junior and we just said, hey, you're, you're a freshman. You know, you did nothing, you completed none of your classes, so we did have a couple of those, I think it was last year. But as far as this group of them this year, I, we haven't had any next year, I'm, I'm sure we'll see some of that. Um, but, you know, it just depends, I, I don't know, even, you know, parents may just be like, they may get, they, when kids get used to not being in school, it's, it's hard unless you have, you know, pretty, pretty strong, strong rooted parents at home saying, hey, no, you're gonna get your education. Cause then I think it kind of gets that tendency of just, ah, he's out anyways, heck with it, you know, you're already working, you know? And like I said, I've had, I've had three or four kids just call and say, yeah, I don't like coming to school, I, I don't like getting up, I'm going virtual. And their parents walk up here and sign the paper the next day.
Well, if the kid didn't have to get up, the whole household would have to get up.
Yeah, so.
So, we had sixty-four on our graduate, somebody told me that that was a hundred in freshman, is that? Do we know? What that class size was of a freshman?
I don't know.
No, they should, senior class was sixty-four, I thought it was a hundred.
It was one of our, it was one of our smaller groups, uh, traditionally, even going back in elementary. Uh, we had this big group that graduated in, uh, this is twenty-five, twenty-four, and then the, I, I, traditionally in my mind, I, I remember being that, that, that class of twenty-five being a really small group, like maybe ninety at its peak. May, maybe, and then, I think that was way back in maybe middle school or elementary, we don't know freshman for sure though, no, no.
I would say, looking back on John's, um, records and stuff, it was in the eighties, his freshman year. I think eighty-seven, eighty?
Somewhere in there.
We're not the only ones dealing with this.
No, no, I mean, every, every
I'm sure everybody is struggling with the same thing and is looking for answers and so, you know, that talk that is out there and, you know, talking to other schools, finding out what strategies people are using that might be successful and
Yeah, and every, every admin meeting, you know, we, we have an SCA, an administration meeting, we go and meet and everybody's saying the same thing. And I'm not just trying to, to push it off and say that we're, you know, but it, it is, everybody's like, ah, we got kids just wanting to go virtual, it's just, it's just become, it's just really easy for them to do it and it's, I think it's, like I said, I think it's really easy for the parents to not fight it and say, okay, yeah, sure, you're, you're still going to school, so.
All right, thank you. Board policy review, I, uh, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this, but I do wanna keep this in front of us, uh, each board meeting and, uh, look back at, uh, what actions we're taking and what we're looking at in the board meetings to how it corresponds to what, uh, the different principles are that we, uh, have guided us. Uh, for example, the Bear Council is a, is a good opportunity for us to learn and hear more from the community. And that's one of the goals there. Um, the, uh, of course, the, uh, the budget talk and the financial work that we've been doing and we've been hearing and, and, uh, just learning more about what questions to ask is, uh, uh, part of our duties for sure, uh, a major part. Our upcoming, uh, board training session, uh, in, uh, couple of weeks, yeah, May the twenty-seventh, is, uh, a big part of, or a good portion of that is gonna be over financial oversight and, uh, what, uh, what we need to be hearing and what we need to be asking and, uh, and knowing.
I've got a, can I ask a question?
Yes, do, go ahead.
I notice, I notice on these that we have our, um, oh, what's our list?
CECL.
CECL goals on there. When it comes to when we're taking action on something like tonight, we're approving the salaries and benefits, is it, would it be a, a huge task to add the policy? Like to the, the link of, of the policy or a quick link or something to that, like, we're gonna take action.
And here's the policy that
Well, I mean, at least us as board members, when we're prepping, we can say, here's the policy that pertains to salaries and benefits, this is what our role is, what you're, what the district does or whatever, so we have some
frame of reference.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, that would be
When we approve, uh, discipline policies, when we approve schedules.
Anytime we take action, we, we've got a policy that tells us what we need to be doing there. No, whether we'll read it and be fresh on the job, but it will at least be, and I don't know, that may be something that's challenging there.
No, we can find the policy, Isaac, can we put it on?
Yeah, it's easy to look at.
There we go, done.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be good information.
I can find it, I can put it on.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, that's, we can do that.
Um, yeah. A lot of, or some of this, uh, encourages us looking, you know, seeking input from, from others, including, uh, uh, students and faculty and staff and, and our, and supporting our decision-making, uh, for information, so, you know, in what ways or what input, uh, are we looking for that might help us in some of our decisions? Uh, for example, we got a lot of input whenever the calendar issue came up. Uh, uh, yeah, and, uh, so, so in any of our upcoming decisions, what input might be useful? Uh, and that, that's, I'm not asking for answers right now, but that's something that we need to think about and, uh, so that we can, uh, seek that input, you know, ask the right posters from the right people. Do you guys have anything else concerning that, that policy? I, I do wanna keep this in front of us and, uh, and for example, think about who we need to hear from and what we'd like to hear from them. You know, Toby being here is, is a step in the right direction and the advisory council and so on is a, is the right direction, uh, as far as receiving instituted input. Uh, but maybe we need to give them a little, uh, bit of guidance in what we, you know, what different issues we'd like to hear about.
Sure.
All right, anything else there? Then, uh, we're to comments from our guest, any of our guests have comments at this time?
Matt, piggyback on a couple of things Coach Forrest was talking about in his, uh, presentation. Uh, number one, uh, uh, mobility rate, uh, I'm gonna talk about in the June, uh, board meeting when I go over balance scorecard with y'all and I, I've been keeping some detailed numbers, I can give you more K-12 numbers than, uh, where Coach Forrest was focusing more on high school and those were, those were very valuable numbers in my opinion. And, uh, and then the second thing, uh, is about virtual providers, whenever, whenever a student, uh, whenever a student is dropped from a virtual program, like they, like, for example, let's say Lunch, uh, drops a student because they haven't done anything in three weeks and that does happen, uh, they are, uh, those virtual providers aren't required by law to report back to the district. So that way, you know, whenever we get our, uh, whenever we get our graduation cohort reports, uh, showing graduation rate, we don't, we don't have a surprise whenever we see that student on our report, uh, or, or if they just don't return to school somewhere, so. Uh, and then, and, but if, when we do get those, uh, I do feel like it is, it is our responsibility to also reach back out to those families to try to, uh, try to encourage them, encourage the students to continue their education in some form or fashion, so.
But that's a couple of things real quick, Matt. I think you mentioned last month about you wanted to cover reading success plans, I think I was on the road and I heard it kind of mentioned, but I don't think it was covered this month, you wanted some better information on those? I didn't see it on the agenda or?
Yeah.
Apparently it wasn't covered. Didn't receive anything?
We didn't get anything this month, no, we will though.
So we will later. Um, and I'm curious on, on Josh's CTE, uh, update, uh, we've got a program with one student in it this year. Um, and I'm curious of why that, a program like that would be continued. Um, doesn't sound like it's financially or, or would be justifiable.
Which program, what, we don't have this program.
The pathways education.
Pathways education, you have one student this year.
This year, I, I, yes, you are correct, sorry, I thought you, I thought you meant the upcoming year.
And we're cutting twelve, I think it was mentioned earlier, if I heard it right, staff?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, even more.
Yeah.
Uh, staff members, teachers, support staff, what have you, that obviously take care of many more students and support many more students within the district. Just a question of how, I would wonder how that evaluation came up of what's more important there? That's for you guys.
All right. Anything else? Well, then, um, I would receive a motion to go into executive session.
We have your access.
Oh.
And then the
Yeah, all right, I'm as fresh. Yeah. I was skipping there.
You're good.
Um, we had the, uh, salary schedule and benefits shown to us earlier in the, uh, financial part of the meeting. Do any of you need to look at that? Uh, you have it if you look back on there.
I updated it a little bit ago too, yeah, so it's why it's not everything we talked about.
Okay. So I would, uh, take a motion to approve the salary schedule and the benefits for FY twenty-six as presented.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And that's it for.
Well, do you wanna set the July board meeting, did I hear back from anybody that that was a bribe? Is it, I.
What was the name?
July first.
You're gonna go.
Alright, the motion being ordered to, uh, set the July board meeting for July first. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright. Now, motion to move into executive session for personnel.
Some.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Alright.